It is 10:01. Welcome to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners. We will now start the meeting and start with a salute to the flag. Commissioner Clark, if you could lead us in the salute to the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Hermann, Vice Chair is absent. Michael Clark. Marius Garcia.
Here.
Clara Andriola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Nate Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasini, your County Clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, if you'll take us into item three.
Yes, item three is Commissioner and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you. I am looking to the manager first. Do you have announcements for us?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of things. First of all, to announce that the Washoe County Planning Commission is still looking for applicants for an opening on that board from District Five.
Okay.
Of unincorporated Washoe County and may also be, but must be, a registered voter. Deadline to apply is May 20th at 5:00 PM. The other opening that still exists is with the Board of Equalization for a term that will begin in 2024. That application process will stay open through October of this year. Just to mention, if anybody in the public is interested in those, you can get more information at the Washoe County website.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Looking to my fellow commissioners, do any commissioners have announcements, reports, updates? I'm seeing Commissioner Clark signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make several announcements. One of them, I've got to leave at four o'clock today, so I'll be out of here going to Judge Flavin's investiture. So I'll be out of here at four o'clock, number one. So I want to make any comments that I will have, I would have it normally at the end of the meeting, at the beginning. So bear with me and I'll go through a few items. I want to start off with today's agenda and looking at public comment. It talks about during the general public comment period at the end of the meeting. I'd like to know, who knows when the end of the meeting is? Could we have a poll here? Can we have a pool? Maybe we're a gaming state. Maybe we should all put in a dollar and see who can come up with the closest time of getting out of here. But a little story about last meeting that we had. I looked at a man out in the audience. He was here all day, all day. Mr. Archileta waited all day to talk about an issue of he believes that the county had something to do with flooding his septic system. I feel sorry for somebody who comes in here and has to wait five, six, seven hours to make a public comment where they should have come in in the morning and been able to make their comment and get out of here. So to all the Mr. and Mrs. Archiletas out there, or anybody else that wants to come in and make a public comment, when do you come in? Do you come in here and sit all day long? Or do you come in and guess? Or should we have these people call in? But somebody has a comment and they want to share it with the commissioners, they should be able to share it with the commissioners. How can we do our job if we can't hear what the public's concerns are? And, you know, not letting people talk is a big issue. I've asked for this to be on the agenda. I think we need to vote as commissioners on this. We talked, I saw an article in the paper the other day, yesterday I think it was, about if the chair is breaking the law. No one's ever accused anybody of breaking the law. It just isn't right. If something isn't right, does it have to be illegal as well? I mean, we can all think of instances in life that things aren't, things aren't, it isn't against the law, but it still isn't right. You know, I can think of plenty, plenty instances of things that you could do that aren't right, and then you could use the cover of, "It isn't illegal, so therefore I can do it." That doesn't fly. As commissioners, we should hear what the public has to say. And again, for Mr. Archileta, who had to sit here all day long to talk about flooding his septic system, this is a senior citizen, has to sit here, and he can't get his voice heard. If you disagree with somebody, this is America. You should still be able to talk about whatever you want to talk about. Us as commissioners will agree or not agree, but we need to hear about it. As a business owner, sometimes there's things that you don't want to hear that you need to hear. And so just saying, "I don't like that group of folks, and I don't like their ideas, and I'm going to take their voice away from them," and it's insulting and belittling to the public. So I disagree with that. Again, I'd like to ask for this open comment, public comment at the beginning of the meeting be agendized and voted on by the commissioners. Let's see who votes for it and who votes against it. The article went on to say that the chair was unanimously voted on to be the chair, and that's correct. I thought she was a reasonable person and could, we could have a discussion about just about anything. But this unilateral decision to take away the public's voice, even though it's not illegal, isn't right, and I'm opposed to it. If we had to vote again to see if I would vote for her to be the chair, the answer is no. And I just want people, I want to be on the record that taking the citizens' voice away is not acceptable to me. That's number one. Commissioner Comments, some more comments here. On Friday, May 12th, I had a senior gathering at the Reno Elks Lodge and wanted to thank Gina Nolte, Jay Kenny of Doughboys' Donuts for the donuts, Reno, the Reno Elks for allowing us to use their facility. Alexandra Wilson here at the county coordinated the event, and I try to thank her daily for everything she does to keep me showing up at the right place at the right time. Truckee Meadows Fire Chief, Chief Moore, and Washoe County Under Sheriff Jeff Church both spoke and were ahead of the event. We had about 100 folks attended, so lots of questions, but what once stood out to me, apparently the last city of Reno, Reno City Council meeting, one of the council members made comments and statements in Spanish and then followed up with the same comment in English. This led to residents commenting to me, "How do we know what he said?" And then he went in to mention how limited public comment is if you don't speak English fluently. I told him I'd check it out, and I did check it out on Google, and we find out that about 25% of Washoe County's population is Hispanic. His suggestion was that county, city, state government bodies get interpreters for the meetings, and I thought it was a great idea. Maybe we should have an interpreter here for our meetings. And even somebody who does signee might be a good idea to make sure everybody gets a chance to understand what's taking place. Number two, at last week's BCC meeting, Commissioner Hill didn't gavel me into silence as she did on the April 25th meeting where I was asked Library Director a question. But at last week's meeting, we were talking about Tyrolean Village, and I was trying to make a comment and Chair Hill overspoke me. Excuse me. Back to that. I talked to the assessor and found out exactly what I needed to know. In Tyrolean Village, you own the property that your condo is on. In some cases, if you have a detached garage, you also own that garage. And in areas where the garages are on common area, it's very unique property, in that common area, land that's owned by all of the residents have garages that are used exclusively by the owner of one residence. And so that was the issue that we were trying to find out. The garages are on common area for the most part up there. And in the common area, they're only allowed one parking, one vehicle per garage. Even if it can hold 10, they're allowed by CCNR one vehicle per garage. So something that the assessors verified with me. I found that out yesterday. Again, back to Carlos Archileta, Golden Mesa Project. We made him wait eight and a half hours to learn, to speak to us for three minutes about his home. Do we really call that good government? And I want to go on the record and have a response that we find out if somebody here has spoken with Mr. Archileta, and we're working to help him. Number four, last week's meeting during discussion with the Tyrolean Village, I've already talked about that, but we need to make sure that in the future, when we're having issues about short-term rentals, that we have a good understanding of what we're dealing with in that particular community. You know, I wanted to, when I ran for public office, I wanted to make sure we had a common sense rules and regulations on STR, short-term rentals, and that people needed to know what that could be, what they could do and could not do. I plan to bring that back to the board and looking at caps on STRs for the long term. I remember in 2020, when short-term rentals began, being discussed in the BBC meetings, and the final vote was in 2021. So my question is, when will short-term rentals be on the BCC agenda? It's been two years. I sent an email last week to Manager Brown and Nate Edwards and Chair Hill explaining I had attended the Republicans Women Reception for Commissioner Andriola, and the Governor's Mansion while there. I was sitting with a great many folks from Incline Village. They had mentioned the comments about the May 9th meeting and bringing the short-term rentals back to the agenda and echo their comments. When is this coming back? Let's put it on the agenda and hear from the citizens. So I'm asking for this to come back sooner than later on the agenda, and I'd also, again, want to reiterate, we need to have on the agenda a vote over shutting down public comment at the beginning of the meetings. Special use permit. I need some substantial evidence that some people who appeared in front of us last week are the people moving forward with this project. As soon as we voted for that Piranha Power Line meeting last week, somebody came in and told us that instantly the person who just got approved was planning on selling this, and it's, again, just a rumor, I'd like to find out more details, planning on selling this to a foreign country. And the comments were made that it's so close to Hurlong Military Base that they didn't want foreign investment that close. So again, I'd like to bring that back. I voted in favor of that power line, and since I voted in favor of it, I'd like to see it back on the agenda, and I'd like to have the applicant come back and answer some questions about this, if this is, in fact, going to affect some national security. So brought that up, and I'd like to get that on the agenda. And so I, as someone who voted for it, I want to, I want to change my view and have it brought back for a vote. Okay, talking about high-density consent agenda items today, 6D2, 6D3.
Commissioner Clark, can we talk about consent when we get back to that place?
I'd like to get it out of the way now, please.
We have it on the agenda, so this is for announcements and requests.
Okay. All right, let's go back to my request then. I'd like to get the public comment at the start of the meeting back on the agenda. I've asked for it last week. Commissioner Herman asked for it. I don't see it on the agenda now. I'd like to know when that's going to be on the agenda. And I'd like to know. And I'd like to see the power line brought back. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking to my other commissioners. Do you have anything? Commissioner Andriola?
I would just like to add that I too did some research on the Panera transmission, and the contract specifically states that the special use permit shall remain in effect as long as the business is in operation and maintains a valid business license. So if, in fact, it is sold, the contract would be null and void and would come back to the commission. I too am looking at additional conversations about some of the information that was shared. So I just wanted to echo for the record that there is provisions that if any change to the business occurs, it has to, the contract is essentially null and void, and we'll come back to this commission. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On May 11th, Manager Brown and I and members from the city of Reno, city of Sparks, met with the leadership from the Reno Housing Authority. It was a great presentation. They talked a lot about the affordable housing that's provided throughout the county for low-income families, seniors, and people with disabilities. And we took a driving tour to many of the properties, all of which were in District Three. And as I've been kind of out and about this month for Older Americans Month, talking to seniors, I wanted to let folks know that on our Washoe County Senior page, we have a Quick Links tab, and under there, there's a Community Resources website, and you can scroll down to Housing. There's a section where folks can easily access information about the Reno Housing Authority and other resources for the community. But it was just a really eye-opening, great experience, and I highly recommend it to the other commissioners if you have an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have a few announcements. So this is just a meeting of reconsiderations. I'm requesting that we reconsider STR case WSTRAR 22-0013. Mr. Gupta and staff shared with the commission of inaccuracies about the CCNRs that were presented by the appellant. I want that to come back to the board. Additionally, I just want to point out to the board members, our Washoe County Board of Commissioners' Rules and Procedures Handbook that was adopted on October 4th, 2022. I just want to point out, 5.6, page 1, Request to Staff. Just as a reminder, commission members will not request any staff projects that entails over two hours of staff work without seeking approval from the commission through an item placed on the board agenda. Commissioner requests that are considered on an agenda for this purpose should identify the strategic objective, fiscal goal that is related. If no strategic objective or fiscal goal is related, that also must be noted. So just a note to the board members on that. And like Commissioner Clark, I want to just outline, we will be taking a lunch break at 1:00 PM if we aren't already finished, and we'll be back in an hour after that, so folks can plan out their meeting accordingly. So with that, any other commissioner comments?
Signed in again, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to talk about registration of lobbyists.
That's an item on our agenda, Commissioner Clark, so we'll get to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Manager, if you will lead us into item four.
Item four are proclamations, including items 4A1 through 4C1.
Wonderful. And I'd like to take these as a whole for one vote and one public comment period, and we'll have Commissioner Garcia do 4A1 first for Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week.
Is anybody here to accept it?
Yes, I think the sheriff, is the sheriff's office here? Great.
You guys are going to let me hang out here all by my thoughts, huh?
All right, good morning, everyone. Today, I'm reading in this proclamation, "Whereas every day, public safety officers work tirelessly to protect our citizens, enforce our laws, and keep our neighborhoods safe. Reporting for duty, knowing full well the dangers that they face and the sacrifices they may be called upon to make. And whereas this week, Washoe County pays tribute to the thousands of men and women who serve us with extraordinary bravery, and we remember the heroes who have laid down their lives in pursuit of a safer, more just society. And whereas we will, we can never fully repay them for their service, we must work to ensure our law enforcement officers are equipped with the tools and technology they need to do, to do their jobs safely and efficiently. And whereas Washoe County owes a profound debt to all of those who have worn a badge and to the families whose care enables them to serve with courage and pride. When the unthinkable happens and officers give their lives or are seriously injured in the line of duty, we have an obligation to give their loved ones and the support that they deserve. And whereas during Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week, we recall the selflessness of our law enforcement officers and their families, and we honor all of those who devote their lives to forging a stronger, safer America. Let's reflect on their invaluable contributions as we enjoy the peace they bring to our communities, and let us vow that their service will never be taken for granted. Now therefore, on Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim, May 15th, 2023, the week of May 14th through the 20th, 23, sorry, I'm so tongue-tied today, Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week. So it is my honor to give this to you."
Thank you. Sheriff?
Thank you, Chairman, Chairwoman Hill. And Commissioner, I just want to thank you guys for recognizing not only our fallen officers, but all the members of the sheriff's office and around the nation that every day serve our communities, and want to thank Commissioner Garcia and Manager Brown last week for attending our memorial service of ours and Commissioner Hill.
And so did Commissioner Clark.
Clark, I missed you guys. No, at ours?
Oh, at ours.
Ours, sorry. You were at Hoth?
Yes.
So we did multiple. It was a whole bunch. We'll make sure next year, you guys have those. But thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to come recognize all of those fallen heroes. So I appreciate it and thank you for recognizing us.
Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it. Okay, we are now on 4B1, which is Building Safety Month, and Commissioner Andriola is going to do this item. And I think that we've got Kelly Mullen and her team. Come on down.
Good morning. Good morning.
Wow, look at this great team we got.
Everyone's here. Hi. Guys might have to.
Yeah, file over. There you go.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming. I'd like to go ahead and welcome everyone to the Board of County Commissioners' proclamation. "Whereas Washoe County is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of diligent guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety, construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings we, where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commission does hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Building Safety Month."
Thank you. And Ms. Mullen? Come up, please. Talk about your amazing team.
Yes, I'm so glad that everybody was able to be here today. So this is our building program. We are represented here today by our inspectors, plan check team, permit technicians, and some of our support staff. They do an amazing job. I'll say that just in 2022, we issued over 5,500 building permits.
Wow.
We conducted over 29,000 inspections. This group works very hard, day in, day out, to service our customers and to make sure that the buildings that go up in unincorporated Washoe County are safe. So thank you so much for recognizing the team today.
Yes, great work, team. Thank you so much for all that you do for the county.
And as somebody who walks by your front desk every day, I appreciate the amazing customer service, so shout out to you.
Thank you. Okay. We are now on to item 4C1, which is International Internal Audit Awareness Month, and Commissioner Clark will be delivering that proclamation.
Proclamation from the Washoe County Commissioners. "Whereas the internal auditing is an independent objective assurance and consulting activity designed to add value and improve an organization's operations. And whereas internal auditors are explorers, analysts, problem solvers, reporters, and trusted advisors, today's internal audit professionals are revered in their critical thinking and communication skills, as well as industry-specific business knowledge. And whereas professional internal auditors agree to abide by the code of ethics that holds, upholds the principles of integrity, objectivity, confidentiality, and competency. They raise red flags when they discover improper conduct. And whereas internal auditors, with a solid understanding of the organization's objectives, examine the operation to determine whether they are effective, efficient and effective. And whereas internal auditors investigate possible fraudulent behaviors throughout the organization with access to all records and the authority to conduct audits at any level of the organization. And whereas internal auditors stand as a third line of defense and are nimble and at the broadest view of the organization's risk, internal audits are here to help the other lines mitigate risk and be the last line of defense that catches a risk even before it crosses the line to be detected by external assessors. And whereas internal auditors and supporters across the, across America are celebrating International Internal Audit Awareness Month, now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as International Internal Audit Awareness Month. Thank you for your service. And by the way, I think this is a great, great opportunity to talk about internal audits. I think that everybody should appreciate the work you do, and I think we should have more internal audits. So thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you. Do y'all have anything to say? And this is a relatively new team to the county, so introduce yourselves, please.
So I'm Caitlin. I'm your guys' new internal audit manager. To my left is Louis Martenson. He's the new internal auditor. And then the city of Reno internal auditors decided to join us in support, so we really appreciate that. And I just want to say special thanks to Chair Hill and Vice Chair Herman, who are not here, for serving on our committee. We really appreciate that and getting to work with all you guys throughout the years.
Well, welcome to Washoe County. Thank you for your commitment and dedication to making sure that we're transparent to our citizens. So, yes, we really appreciate it. And let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Madam Clerk, before we take a motion on this, yes, Commissioner Clark?
I'm not sure of your process. I think you have a public comment.
Yeah, I was about to call a public comment. But if you would like, I think you are signed in, so you can. Madam Clerk, could you move Ms. Kidd up to the top?
She's right there on top.
Okay, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you, everyone. Good morning. For the record, Emily Kidd, certified internal auditor. I come before you today to promote internal audit services and the internal audit profession this May, which is Internal Audit Awareness Month. I met many of you about town and through my role as the internal auditor for the city of Reno, but today I'm here as the president of our Northern Nevada chapter of the Institute of Internal Auditors. Auditors provide an integral role in local governments. This role is uniquely situated to provide independent appraisal function designed to assist councils and boards, as well as executive management in establishing accountability, transparency, and a culture of continuous improvement in government operations. At its core, internal audit helps the organization achieve its objectives and success. Currently, our region is underrepresented in internal audit professionals across our governments and quasi-government entities. I'd like to take this opportunity to applaud this body's commitment to audit and audit services with your recent addition of a second 1.0 FT. with your recent addition of a second 1.0 FTE and your audit team. I look forward to working with them and on our regional audit services together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. And I had the pleasure to work with her at the City of Reno. So welcome to Washoe County. Madam Clerk.
Penny Brock.
Good morning, Penny Brock. For the record, I would like my comments and handouts to be put in the record per NRS. There are several items that I'm so glad that you've brought this proclamation forward. There are several items that many of us in the county feel need an internal audit. The first one is the 2020 and 22 elections. There were many irregularities that have been found that are in violation of state and federal law among them. We've found that there's a problem with the algorithm flipping votes. There's been over 40,000 people who need to be investigated that are on the voter rolls. We've got all this documentation. We feel it would help for an internal audit because we've got all the documentation. Another audit that we need is an audit of the 2020 and 2022 voter rolls. There was a canvas done. One story is two of our volunteers went to an address up Peabody, Dirt Road. They came to an abandoned gold mine, and there had been multiple mail-in ballots from that address, just to give you an idea. Another thing we need on, an audit on, is the CARES campus. There's been over $110 million given to the CARES campus since 2021. We need to find out where it went. They've got like 750 guests. That's what they call the homeless. So where has the money gone? We would like an audit on that. There's been millions of dollars spent on the CARES campus. We need an audit to find out where it went. We need an audit to find out about Commissioner Hill being on the board, and perhaps she can help with an audit to know where the money went. Another audit we need is the $3,000, $300,000 that County Manager Hill Brown says that he's authorized to spend. When I read the NRS, it says that only the governing board or the authorized representative, who is the purchasing and contracts manager, can spend up to $100,000. There's nowhere in NRS that Washoe County is authorized to have someone like the purchasing manager spend up to $300,000. So we need an audit to know where the money went for up to $300,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Elise Weatherly.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, the bad girl, because I tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. What I will say is thank you guys for doing these things. They mean a lot. What I will say is it's almost like an HOA. Is it hostility or is it advocacy, right? And the peace officers, I want peace. We want peace. We want memory of peace. But you know what? Some people hate the police. Some people hate building inspectors. Some people actually hate internal auditors. Can you believe that? It's like my daughter hates the police. I love them. I give them thumbs up every time they go by. What I will say too is the accountability. I'm grateful for that 1.0 FTE because I used to work in stuff like that, and I'm so grateful for that. It means a full-time position, one position. What I would like to do too is I agree with the audits for maybe the 20 and 22 elections, right? You can't tell if something is wrong or right unless you audit it, correct? So I showed Deanna Spiculus picture to Master Engineer Tom Gordon the other day because we work with her husband Jerry as the best bass player in the universe. Okay, so he and I were both looking at her going, she doesn't look like somebody that should have received death threats. Let's look into it, find out if she had any hand in any kind of election fraud. It should be easy enough to investigate. Also, I was watching somebody from another country where their building was burning up because they had no rules or regulations on it. They had no sprinkler system. A bunch of people died in that condo because it wasn't set up correctly. So building inspectors, yes. Peace officers, yes. Internal auditors, yay. By the way, when I first started working at the Eldorado, I actually loved the internal auditors. I would go hound them. I'd go, you audit me, you audit my department, you audit my accounting payroll department. Because what if I'm doing something wrong? You know, if I'm doing something wrong, let's look at the books and see. Because if I'm doing something wrong, I'm willing to change. I'm willing to follow the law. By the way, when I get escorted out, when I don't follow the rules and regulations, can we have a nice, you know, muscular police officer carry me to my car so I can whisper in his ear? I hate corruption. I hate corruption. Let's overturn the corruption. Let's tip the tables on the corruption, right? It matters. So we've got three things that are really good but can be hated by those who don't love the truth. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now go into item five. Mr. Manager.
Item five is donations. Items 5A1 through 5.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I got it so excited. I forgot to do a motion on the proclamation. So I'm looking for a motion on proclamations 4A1, 4B1, and 4C1. Sorry, Mr. Manager. Yes.
I'd like to make that motion, please.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to accept the proclamations and a second. Any question on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, I think that carries unanimously. Yes, four to zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Now, Mr. Manager. Sorry about that.
Item five is donations. Items 5A1 through 5A3.
And Commissioner Garcia, do you mind reading the donations into the record, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to move to acknowledge and accept the following donations in 5A1, 2, and 3, and thank the generous contributions from our community for various items to the human services agencies, including clothing, personal hygiene products, monetary contributions, food, children's toys, registration fees for extracurriculars for foster children, nutrition donation services for seniors, and many others as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you so much. Yes, we so appreciate our generous community. And we have a motion. Do we have a second to accept the donations? Commissioner Andriola?
I'll go ahead and second. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, I think we have public comment on that item?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Elise Weatherly.
Hi, Elise Weatherly, the bad girl. I just wanted to let you know that it's about the money, right? All this stuff is about the money. $4,325. Remember last time I said, hey, where's my $5,000? If I were to actually get $4,325, $39, $7,001.85, $8,134.43, and $529.20, it might make up for the money that I accidentally spent on the place called Summit Christian Church. I know.
Ms. Weatherly, bring it back to the donations.
I call it Summit Christian Church. I donate.
Ms. Weatherly.
I'm talking about donations.
We're talking about these donations.
Those only donations. Where's the police officer? I would like to be carried out.
Ms. Weatherly.
May I be carried out?
No.
Okay, that's it for now because I'm going to go donate my time to my grandson to feed him. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Okay, with a motion and a second, any question on the motion by the board seeing?
Just wanted to make one comment.
Yes, Commissioner Clark.
I wanted to thank everyone who's made a donation on this, donations on this item, and wanted to mention the Sparks firefighters. Their union 1265 donated $5,265. So I want to thank Sparks for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. So we have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, a second by Commissioner Andriola. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And I think that motion carries unanimously as well. Yes, thank you very much, everyone. We are now on to item six. Mr. Manager.
Item six, Madam Chair, is the consent agenda, which includes items 6A1 through 6D8. I have no changes.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And I am going to first throw it over to Commissioner Garcia for disclosure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and fellow commissioners, out of an abundance of caution, I'd like to make a disclosure on item 6C2. Well before this item was agendized, I reached out to the District Attorney's Office regarding my current employment of the Washoe County School District and previous nonprofit board experience as it relates to this item. As previously disclosed, I'm an employee of the Washoe County School District, finishing up my last school year as a field-based school counselor. And I also wanted to disclose that I served as a board member for the nonprofit Sierra Nevada Journeys from November 2019 to November 2022. After an internal ethics review, the District Attorney's Office recommended that a disclosure would suffice in my capacity as county commissioner to promote access to parks, wellness, and outdoor STEM education for my constituents who attend Sun Valley Elementary Schools.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And I would like to highlight 6C1 and 6C2. And I think we have some public commenters on those items for the donations from the special commission district. It looks like we do have the DA signed in. Mr. DA?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up on the disclosure that Commissioner Garcia made.
Great.
Real quick and explain some of the rationale on the analysis on that. In 281A.420, it has the four categories of conflict that have to be disclosed. And then the second part, once a disclosure is made, is whether there has to be abstention. And abstention is disfavored by the law. Subsection 4 of 281A.420 states that it must be presumed that the independence of judgment of an official is not going to be materially affected by any of the four categories as long as what they're supporting doesn't fall more or less heavily on them than anyone else within the general group. And it also then goes on in this next subsection to state that the public policy of this state favors the right of a public official to perform the duties for which the public officer was elected or appointed and to vote or otherwise act upon a matter, provided a proper disclosure is made. Later on, it states that the abstention by a public officer disrupts the normal course of representative government and deprives the public and the public officer's constituents of a voice in governmental affairs. And so abstention is only required under those principles in what the statute says, quote, unquote, "clear cases." And that's the rationale behind not having to abstain in a situation like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that explanation. I think that was very helpful for folks. So as I was saying, I would like to take the consent items together, same thing with public comment, and also want to highlight, before we open it up to public comment, unless commissioners have items they want to pull, I'd like to highlight 6C1. This is from Commission Special District Fund from Commissioner, our Vice Chair Herman for District 5. She is recommending $15,000 to the Red Rock Volunteer Fire Department. And I think we do have a representative here to make public comment on that. And 6C2, the Commission Special District Fund of $10,000 by Commissioner Garcia for District 3 to Sierra Nevada Journeys for outdoor educational experiences for Sun Valley Elementary School. Okay, any commissioners have items they want to pull? I'm not seeing any. So Madam Clerk, can we please do public comment?
Certainly. Phil Garand.
Oh, he's not here. Okay, thank you.
Sean Hill.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner and members of the commission. My name is Sean Hill, and I lead Sierra Nevada Journeys. We are a local STEM and outdoor education nonprofit and the would-be facilitators of outdoor education programming for Sun Valley youth as referenced in Agenda Item 6C2. So I see my role as a servant to our community and as a servant to the youth in our community. So I'm here on behalf of the students from Sun Valley Elementary, Lois Allen, Virginia Palmer, and Esther Bennett Elementary Schools. Research continues to come out. In fact, most recently, a collaborative study from Harvard and Stanford indicating that students are still far behind academically since the pandemic. And that gap is much deeper for students of color. Young people also lost ground socially and also with respect to their mental health. We are here because our programs provide critical experiences for children, informal educational experiences that captivate kids and show them what is possible. STEM, outdoor education, leadership, it's all there. It's all part of our programs. And we want to bring these experiences to students in their own beautiful backyard at the Sun Valley Regional Park, which is a Washoe County land. I just wanted to close here. The nonprofit sector provides critical community supports. And in some cases, we work hand in hand with government agencies to resource these services. As a nonprofit leader, I have to be scrappy and look for funding from all corners. Sometimes government is involved with that. Sometimes private foundations are involved with that. Sometimes the corporate sector is involved with that. And I just want to, as a demonstration for what our programs can do and what folks think of our programs, I just want to point out that Tesla invests in our programs because they see the opportunity for the next generation of the STEM workforce in our community. And so that is not only an opportunity for employers, but it's an opportunity to lift children out of poverty and to capture them before they make those decisions. These are high-paying jobs, and they can lift families out of the cycle of poverty. So I think this agenda item is a worthwhile investment into the youth of the North Valleys. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record, please put my comments and handout in the record. Last week, when this subject came up on donations, there were several comments raised. And many of us questioned why our tax money is going for these donations. And Commissioner Andriola and Commissioner Clark did raise questions. And as I recall, Commissioner Clark asked that this be put on the agenda so that this whole issue of donations could be discussed. And I think that's a wonderful idea. And perhaps Commissioner Clark would like to add that to his list of what he wants on the agenda. So my concern is the donation for $10,000 to the Sierra Nevada Journeys. We as taxpayers are spending, I think it's over $1 billion on Washoe County schools. The kids can't read. 80% of the kids cannot read. If children cannot read, this is a huge part of the problem for juvenile delinquency and not being an educated workforce. We're giving enough money. Why do we have to give our taxpayer money? I think it would be better suiting to law enforcement because we've got a growing crime problem because of what is happening at our southern border. We have a growing fentanyl crisis in Washoe County. So I am not in favor of this donation. I know it's going to pass because it's consent. I also take issue with all these items being put on the consent agenda because we, the public, cannot address them individually for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Thiessen.
Good morning. Betty Thiessen, for the record. I am speaking on the 6C1 item. I would like to thank Commissioner Jean Herman for bringing this up because the Red Rock Volunteer Fire Department, I live in that district, and they definitely need help. We've had two large fires in the last couple of years, and it's bled their funds. They have an annual picnic to raise funds, but this really helps them. And I understand Jean did donate the generator. Our power is auto-lot, and we do need a generator at the fire department for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay, well, with that, I am looking for a motion on our consent items. Commissioner Garcia?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the items on the consent.
Thank you. Do a. Do I have a second? I will second. We have a motion, a second. Any comments on the consent? I'm seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you so much. So I am going to ask that we move to our public hearing for the budget. I know that was something that commissioners wanted to spend a lot of time discussing, and I want to make sure we, we have enough time to really have that discussion. So I am moving to item 10. I will open the public hearing. Mr. Manager?
Item 10 is a public hearing discussion and possible action to the, on the Washoe County tentative budget to fiscal year 2024 pursuant to NRS 154.596, estimated appropriations of $1,644,1,950, as well as possible changes to the tentative budget and adoption and certification of it as the final budget for fiscal year 2024 pursuant to NRS 354.598, estimated appropriation, again, of $1,96, of $1 billion, I'm sorry, $96,357,887. The proposed budget incorporates broad board priorities or funding for existing contractual obligations, personnel costs, including new positions, third-year property tax refunds, excuse me, maintaining the county's assets and information, and infrastructure needs, election support, and operating budget requests. The proposed budget also includes the following action. To approve, number one, to approve the changes to position control of fiscal year 2024 indicated on Attachment A, including 74.49, net new full-time equivalent positions, and reclassification impacting 39 positions and incumbents. If necessary, to accommodate any material change desired by the board, as identified during the hearing on the tentative budget. This then may be continued to May 23, 2023 at 10 o'clock.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. And I think that we have Ms. Yakobin here for a presentation.
We do. And as a prelude to her comments, Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that we come to you with our proposed budget for FY 2024. It does reflect the strategic plan guidance as set forth by this board earlier in the year in January. And so staff has taken that input and marshaled it into the policy decisions that you'll see reflected in this budget. Secondly, I'd like to point out and thank the county leadership across the departments because in the last three years, we've been through some pretty challenging financial times with a pandemic and many of the, and rising inflation and other issues that we have faced along with everybody else in this community and nationally. And we've still been able to, over the last three years, put together a strong financial performance in terms of being able to add to fund balance in each and every year. And we've actually spent less than we projected in each year in terms of general fund expenditures. So the culture of the organization, I think, is intact in terms of being responsible stewards of the monies that we receive. And we don't see a change in that going forward. As we've discussed in the year ahead, given some of the economic conditions that seem to be forming up, we are seeing a softening of C-Tax revenues and other revenues. And we want to be cautious in our approach going forward next year as far as expenditures. So the budget we're presenting to you minimizes additional FTE requests. There are FTE requests in there, but those are prioritized to the areas of the county, again, based on your direction in the strategic plan. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Abby Yakobin, who is our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
You may want to step a bit closer.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Manager, thank you. Abby Yakobin, Chief Financial Officer, thank you for coming to our fiscal year 24 tentative budget hearing and final budget adoption. Just to give you some general information on the budget, because we have people with varying years of service on the board and in the public knowing about our budget process, we adopt an annual budget as opposed to the state, which adopts the biennial budget. Our fiscal year runs July 1 through June 30. So when we refer to fiscal year 24, that's because the year ends in '24, and it's just our labeling and naming convention. All of our budgets are passed and submitted in the state's prescribed manner and methodology. The state here is very prescriptive. So all of the documents you'll see are in that state-required format, and the state certifies our budget. And once adopted, our budget can only be amended by the NRS statutes or the NAC. So just the, the presentation here, I'm not going to go into every single word because it would be very, very long. But I want to have it as a little bit of reference material here so you can go back to it and pull it, should you have any questions in the future. So we have several different types of funds. We have governmental funds and proprietary funds. And think about the general fund at $516 million, around 48% of the total budget. That is what we consider kind of like a checking account. It's where all other services that aren't required to be funded by other revenue sources are funded. I think of this as our bread and butter, our public safety, some of our engineering. Those of us who work in the back, supporting the departments that are outwardly facing, human resources, finance, technology services, our attorneys, you know, those types of bread and butter services are funded through the general fund. Almost every government that I can think of has one. And ours is about 48% of our total budget. You'll see it in a minute. Special revenue funds, very brief explanation of those. Those funds are restricted. They're grants, they're donations. They're things that people or agencies have said, here is this funding, use it for this purpose. It must be accounted for separately, special revenue fund. Debt service fund, as you know, from time to time, we try to keep it rare. But the county will issue bonds for large projects. The Medical Examiner's Office is one that comes to mind. As we issue that debt, we make promises or covenants that we will do certain things. Separating the accounting is one of those things. And oftentimes, if it's a special revenue source other than property tax or consolidated tax, we have to hold a reserve. So we need to be transparent about that. We do it in a debt service fund. Capital projects fund, you'll see capital projects presentation after this. But these are your items that are more than one year in duration, that last for more than one year, and in general, are more than $100,000 in cost. But certainly, that, that can be somewhat qualitative, but that's our normal rule of thumb. Proprietary funds. I'd like to focus on the enterprise funds because these are your utilities, your building and safety, your golf courses. They are not subsidized in general by the general fund or other funds in most cases. They are, they run like businesses. They're on a separate basis of accounting. We'll talk about them in a little bit, but they're, they're separate and accounted for separately. Internal services funds, those are, those are also accounted for like businesses, but they serve our internal departments. So think about equipment. We pool our money and purchase equipment. Think about health insurance, risk. If we have a risk fund, it's all, it's, it's funding our internal departments. So those are your internal service funds. They're like small businesses. So let's get into the budget. So just to bring you back to basics a little bit, in January, as Manager Brown just talked about, and as we've talked about in the past, you met in January on the 25th to talk about strategic goals and visioning. And thank you for doing so because that gives us the guidance that we need to propose the budgets that we do to achieve those goals in the next one to three years. So on the left, those are the goals that you've had for, for some time now. The fiscal sustainability, economic impacts, vulnerable populations, and innovative services. Those have been, been there for some time. And then you made them more specific with the five items. I know there are six points, but one crosses two goals on the right-hand side. And so, for example, the regionalization of dispatch, the election system. You'll see those items come up in the budget because you give us that guidance. Thank you for doing that. We'll keep bringing it back to that throughout the presentation. This slide, again, reference material. I want to hit some highlights. Before we talk about how much money we can spend, we have to know how much money we have coming in. We look at the national and local economies for this. Property tax is very stable. In this year, there's a very large property tax increase projected by the State Department of Taxation at 8.45% across all funds. You know, you have the residential cap of three, the commercial cap of eight. The 8.45 is because you're going to see new development come onto the books. That's an incredible amount. That's almost 50% of the general fund's revenue. You'll see that in a pie chart later. But very stable, very steady. That's good news. C-Tax, as Manager Brown mentioned, we're looking at some banking uncertainties. We're looking at inflation. Employment is still low, but the Fed is raising rates to, to make some economic shifts right now. And so C-Tax, for '23, the current fiscal year that we're in, we budgeted a 5% increase over the prior year. We're currently trending at 1.4, projecting at 2 to the end of the year. And so this is softening. We're going to continue to monitor it. We're not bringing up any, any big signals right now, but we will continue to monitor this and bring it back to you as the second-largest source of revenue in the general fund, around a third of the general fund revenue. And I'm giving you these round numbers as talking points. Certainly, we can go into the details in the staff report and other places. One more point to make here is that the county's ongoing expenditures, as we look in the general fund at the five-year forecast, are growing at a more rapid pace in the outer years than revenue. We'll be bringing that back to you if that trend continues because we certainly don't want an ongoing imbalance. There'll be a graph on that coming up. Some highlights. This is year three of the Incline Village property tax settlement refunds. This is the third of three years. Next year, you'll see the school district portion of that, but this is the last year of those actual settlements. We have $6 million budgeted for that. Again, back to that kind of north star of the January strategic goals meeting. We, we are enhancing services in the areas that you dictated were your visionary areas. We're also investing in our capital improvement program. We're very proud of it. We'll talk about it in a few minutes. But we have a scorecard that tells us where we should be investing to keep our assets up to speed. And that's very, I'm very proud of that. And I'm going to round here. The numbers are very precise, it's 74.49, but we're adding about 70, or proposing to add about 75 full-time equivalents across all funds. Forty-six in the general fund, 28 and 1/2 in the other funds. And so one thing we need to do is brief you on the changes. As you know, you met and verbally gave us confirmation that you supported the tentative budget. And so now we need to tell you what we've changed between tentative and final. We heard your messaging, and so we, we act on it here. The net increase is very small, at around $581,000. And we have four positions coming online that we had not anticipated when we gave you the tentative presentation. They're all in the public defender and alternate public defenders offices. And the reason is because if you increase public safety and district attorney, you must also defend people as well. So we need to even that playing field as best we can with the budget that we have. So you have four positions there and a very small true-up. I believe we received an increase in some of our dues that we hadn't known by the April 18 meeting, and that's reflected right here. Capital Improvement Fund, this is not a new project. We thought it was spread out over some years. And indeed, it's the 75 Court Street Historic Exterior Project. It's in the first year. So we're moving that funding from multiple years to one year. And there are your reconciling items between tentative and final, April 18 to today. Just to get into the total, the total budget so you can see a little bit about the different places where we spend our money. And I won't go over every single number, of course, but to give you some themes, and then you remember, this is here for backup in case you want the details later. The general fund's about 48% of the total of $1.07 billion budget. Special revenue funds, those funds that are restricted by the grantor or donor or a different source other than general revenues, property tax, C-Tax, interest income, that type of thing, that's around 28%. And then you have other more minor funds. It's notable that your internal service funds, remember, we talked about that those serve the internal departments? They're at 9%. Those roll in for financial reporting purposes to the general funds. Your general fund's really over 50% of your total budget. It's just segregated out into internal service funds and general fund. Capital funds, 10%. You can see the county's dedication to keeping up its assets as well. These next three slides, I will not go over them item by item because there's too much detail here. But I wanted to give this to you for the future so that you can get a picture of the magnitude of the county's funds. Again, you can see the general fund, $516 million. But you can also see the other funds. And they're ordered in that general fund, special revenue fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, enterprise fund, internal service fund order. And you'll see that over the next two slides after this. But so you can refer back to the CNO, the size and the magnitude, should anyone ever ask you, how big is the X fund? You'll be able to say the senior services fund's about $7.5 million this year. It doesn't mean that's all we spend in that area. It just means that that's where we're reported, we're required to report that spending against revenue that's dedicated for that purpose. And so now, this is the second of the third slides. And so now you're kind of going into some of your capital projects and your debt service funds. And you can see a capital improvement fund around $95 million. You can see the commitment to the, the community's assets there. And just refer back to this at your convenience. And if there are any questions ever throughout the year, we are here to help. That is our goal. So your total governmental funds is about $940 million. It's a, it's a large portion. The proprietary funds here are relatively small. And here are your proprietary funds. Maybe the most notable is the utilities fund. Maybe not for the operating piece, but the capital piece that we'll get into. I know there are some major upgrades going on in, in that fund. And so that's notable. I know there are some major upgrades going on in that fund, and so, that's notable. But here, you have your six funds in the proprietary category, the enterprise funds and the internal services funds totaling $125 million. When we talk about government function, I always look at this and say, "Okay, are we doing services that the community demands or requires or expects of us?" And I can definitively say we are in this case, looking at these slides based on what I have heard and what I read in our code. Public safety, welfare, remember, general government is those of us in the back supporting, for the most part, those of us in the back supporting those outwardly facing departments. But this split is consistent with what our code states that we do as a county. So, it's a good reinforcer. And then, the right hand is to give you more specificity if you wish. Proprietary funds, these are your smaller, those six funds we talked about. And utilities is by far the largest of those funds. And you'll hear more about that during the capital piece, but there's the breakdown of your enterprise, your business-type funds, your outward-facing ones, and then your internal services, your internal-facing funds. I'm going to switch from dollars to people here, if I can, because this slide, I thought, stood out to me. And if we look back to the Great Recession, right before, sorry, right after the Great Recession, we had almost 3,200 employees at 3179. And now, we're at 3117, and our population has grown from 409,000 to 501,000. So, for me, that goes back to your strategic planning. You talk about innovative services, and I'm proud of this because it means that what we're doing is we're keeping the same staffing level and implementing technology, improving process, and really generally serving the public to what people want because they want more electronic service. They want more technology, and so do we. So, I wanted to show you this for your perspective. Let's get into the general fund as the bread and butter fund, where, you know, as I say, it's almost 50% of the budget or over, if you include those internal service funds. So, sources of revenue, I'm going to highlight, go through the highlights here, are the property tax at almost 50% of the general fund revenue, the consolidated tax. This is why we look at it so closely and why, when we brief on the five-year forecast, we may not brief as much on property tax because it's much more steady. We'll brief you on C-tax and focus on that. So, between those two sources of revenue, you're around 85% of the total general fund revenue. On the spending side, I look at salaries and benefits at 63%. And someone from the perspective of someone who's new here, anecdotally, I don't have any big data articles to back this up, but anecdotally, from other cities and towns that I've seen historically, that number is a little bit larger than that. So, that number did not stand out to me in a high way. Services and supplies at 16%. That's everything from your pencils to your software. That's anything that's not an employee and not in any of the other categories. Transfers out, we'll see a breakdown of that. That's about $95 million of the general fund, where the general fund is subsidizing those other special revenue funds and allowing those programs to continue on with full service to the community. And this one, I will not go over every line, of course, but I wanted to highlight two or three things here. If you see the net change in fund balance in red in the negative 30, 31, and $36 million here, that may seem negative on its face, but as we all briefed on the five-year and now briefing in public on this, I actually look at this as a positive for a couple of reasons. One, as Manager Brown pointed out during his introduction, historically, we have underspent our budgets, and we do try to be conservative on revenue because we want to make sure to be successful with the dollars that we have. So, we end up having surpluses. And so, then, we can come propose to you one-time projects, and this is a key year for those. And we'll go over a couple of the ones that, thank goodness, we did have this one-time money because now we can fund these projects successfully this year. So, while that negative may be shocking because it's very right there on the page, we're spending down because of our frugal behavior in the past. In addition, if you look at the 23.1, going to the right hand to 16.9% in fund balance, unassigned ending fund balance, a friendly reminder that your policy is between 10% and 17%. So, we do want to adhere to your policy. In the government here, we walk a fine line between holding too much in cash and residents not receiving the services that they need and not holding enough to weather a big storm like we've just seen. That's key, and we monitor it closely. And again, we've talked about over the five-year forecast, revenues start growing more slowly than expenditures do. We'll be back to brief you on that in the future if it continues on and if this trend This slide is a graphic representation of what we've just talked about. So, going back to 2007, this is particularly interesting because what it shows is some years expenditures exceed revenue and some years revenues exceed expenditures. And for me, this is kind of like a savings account at home. Not every week is it, are you positive. Some weeks, you have your payroll hitting, and some weeks, you have your expenditures being higher than your revenues. And so, when I look at this, I look at historically, we've built up fund balance, spent it down in one-time places, but look at that at the end of the five-year, you can see the red being the expenditures growing faster than the revenue. So, this is an interesting graphic of the slide we just looked at. As Manager Brown talked about, we have some positions that have been approved, 46 in the general fund. The change between last time and this time is those four that we spoke about in the public defender and the alternate public defender offices. Other than that, the positions may have been clarified by the job evaluation committee, but they're not different than what we presented last time to you. And they're also detailed in the staff report. We do reclassifications as we try to modernize and increase our technological advances and things like that. What worked for us five years ago will not work today. So, departments will come to the job evaluation committee, which is comprised of different departments, and they analyze what the positions will be doing and make sure that they use the corn fairy methodology to make sure things are appropriate in these reclasses. And they're proposing to approve 13 reclasses so that we can have the right positions in the right places to do these new, more modern duties. Transfers out, we talked in the pie chart a few slides ago about transfers out being about $94, $95 million. Now, you can see where those funds go. I won't go over them all because this is, you know, good reference material for later in case there is a question. But capital improvement sticks out to me. 16.5 million is one-time projects. 11 million is ongoing. And as we talked about the infrastructure scorecard, and we'll talk about it more in the next presentation, that tells us how much we should be contributing to keep our assets at their current level. And it's around 18 million that we need to be doing. So, 11 is a great start because it's larger than the past. We're moving in that direction, but we had to balance out all the projects that were needed this year, so we couldn't quite get to that full amount. Other funds, as they are 52% of the budget, let's talk about them for a minute. So, recommended changes in the position changes, we have almost 30 in the other funds at 28.5 in the other funds, and this is not different from last time. And we have some reclassifications. Job evaluation committee has proposed to approve 26 reclassifications so we can get people in the right places, doing the right duties to provide the services needed for the community. Overview of what the CIP looks like. The CIP totals $192 million. Remember, the CIP is a five-year capital improvement program, is a five-year program, the first year of which becomes part of the budget. So, we'll talk about our projects. Some of them are multi-year, but we need to appropriate and budget for that first year so we have spending authority. So, total appropriation is going to be $192 million. And look at the utilities fund. We talked about those being large pieces of equipment, upgrades to plants, things like that. I wasn't surprised when I saw that percentage. And then, again, we spend money on parks, facilities, and other general capital improvements. We'll go over them in more detail in a minute. So, to close out, the fiscal year '24 recommended budget is legally approved appropriation. Once you pass the budget, it becomes our legally approved spending limit unless we change it by the NRS regulations or the NAC. It becomes a financial plan. You're telling us what, you're connecting your strategic plan to the dollars and then giving us a direction. And then, in more granular detail, it becomes our operations guide. How do we do the day-to-day duties to get to your plan to get to the vision? Next steps, as prescribed by the NRS, June 1st of 2023 and every year after, we file the budget in the state's format with the state, and then, we'll post it online so you can certainly see it and the public can see it as well. August 1st of 2023, we have to submit our detailed five-year capital improvement program, the CIP, the debt management policy, and the statement of indebtedness. And then, I'll take questions, but after this, in your packets, there are some more details that we didn't think were presentation appropriate because there are a lot of words on those slides and they're a little bit cluttered, but we wanted you to have it as reference material, so please feel free to peruse at your leisure. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Yakoven. Wow. I have been here for two years. This is my third budget year that I have been at the county, and this is the best budget presentation I've seen in my time here. So, thank you. It's so extensive. Most of the time, we aren't even, we don't go through in detail all those other funds, and especially because we have new board members. Thank you for that. I think that you provided a lot of clarity, and I think that this budget, as Commissioner Garcia said when we discussed this originally, we should be proud of this budget because we're making some strategic decisions, some difficult decisions, because we are trying to be cautious, not knowing what we're looking at for the next fiscal year. But I think you and your team have done an amazing job, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our team is sprinkled throughout the room, but I do want to thank them and thank the department heads for their cooperation. We could not have done any of this without both our teams working together and your guidance. So, thank you, and thank you to Manager Brown as well.
Absolutely. I think that this meets, this budget meets the policies that this board has set and then what our community needs, which is really all of these incredible investments we're looking at. So, Commissioner Clark, I see you signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Manager Brown and his team for listening to some of my concerns and making some additions to the budget based on a couple of my questions. I appreciate that greatly. While I know it's not part of the budget, however, I would, it might impact the budget. I'd like to take, I'm talking about catching up with the rank-and-file employees and the retro pay since the county manager's direct reports were given an increase in January 3rd, 2023. I need to go on the record. I'm concerned that there's no catch-up for the bulk of the Washoe County employees, and I've been asking for a conversation about this and not getting one. I've sent several emails regarding this to Manager Brown and his staff, and while I'm getting responses, I've gotten no dialogue. When are we going to step up and discuss this and do so at a commission meeting with true transparency? You know, I can't vote to approve this budget unless we discuss the retro pay for the Washoe County employees. That's number one. Number two, I'd like to find out what the economic impact to the area is for the payroll of the Washoe County employees. You know, so many times, we have special events here, be it Burning Man or the balloon races or Hot August Nights, and they give us a report about the economic impact. And I think it would be important for the citizens of this county to realize that when they pay taxes, the county redirects them to payroll. And let's find out, what are the multipliers? How many times is that money turned over in our county? And what's the true beneficial economic impact for our citizens, business owners, employees, people who work and conduct business here? That money gets turned over five, six, seven times in the county. I'd like to see that, and I'd like to be proud and tell my constituents that when you pay your taxes, we divert the money, we change the money, we pay people, we buy things, and that money gets regenerated in the community and makes everybody's life a little bit better. So, I think that's important to share that same kind of economic impact. And I think it'd be helpful to have every county department's payroll done that same way so the department heads could be proud of what they're doing in the community by that money being reinvested and regenerated throughout the county. Lastly, I'd like to, I'm concerned on, I don't know what the page number is, but it's general fund, recommended transfers out. Trying to figure out what the difference between indigent services and homeless fund. Are those the same? They're different. One is at indigent services, it's $23 million. Homeless fund is at 21,8 million, almost 22 million. So, you know, between the two of those, we're looking at, you know, $50 million. And I'm just trying to figure out what the difference between those and why are they broken out into different categories? What exactly is different about those two categories?
Commissioner Clark, for the record, Abby Yakoven, Chief Financial Officer. And so, we can certainly get you more detail on that, but there are, sometimes we'll separate in special revenue funds for different types of revenue. And so, there's a property tax levy that goes into the indigent fund, whereas the homeless fund would be transfers from the general fund and other types of grants and other types of transfers that would subsidize those activities. So, sometimes, we'll separate based on the type of revenue in the fund. And it doesn't mean that there's no overlap between the populations. It's just the way that we have to do our fund accounting, if that makes sense. So, it's based on revenue source in this case.
And I think he's asking specifically about services. So, well, unless I'm wrong, but who's?
All of the, all of the above. I'm trying to figure out what the services are, why it's broken down. You know, I know when I was a kid and I didn't want to eat all my peas, I kind of spread them around and put them in different piles so it didn't look like, it looked like I'd done something, you know? So, I'm trying to figure out why this is spread around in different piles. Put it simply. Thank you.
Got it. I understand, I think, and I think that I did that as a child as well, sir. So, again, I think it's due to revenue source, but that's not answering your question. So, why don't I think of a good way to answer the question about what the revenue source is in each fund, what the activities are that come out of the fund, because we certainly have narrative on that. But I don't know that I could hit every single program during this presentation. We certainly can get that for you.
And I want to compliment you. I think you have made an excellent presentation and very, very clear. But again, this is one area that I'm concerned with and my constituents are. We're trying, nobody, it's like a moving target. Nobody can really figure out, how much are we really spending on indigent homelessness? You know, there's probably 50 different euphemisms I could come up with. We could have categories from here till the end of time, but I want to find out why these two are segregated. And it'd be nice if they're going to be done that way, but maybe a grand total next to an asterisk and a grand total so people could understand what was really taking place there.
We sure can, and we have many examples of the populations being served by both different funds. And so, you're correct, it's not a perfect science, and so, we'll get you the best information to describe to your constituents as we can.
Because just, I don't know if this is getting at what you're asking, Commissioner Clark, but I know the indigent services doesn't just fund the CARES campus, it funds many services and departments within the county. So, and different people within the county. So, I think that that's another, I think, are you getting at that, Commissioner?
Well, it's even, it's even more confusing. I'm on this side of the street and on the CARES campus, I walk across the street and I'm getting some indigent funds. Where, you know, the line is very blurred as far as I'm concerned. I'd like some more clarity on that.
We can get that.
Commissioner Clark, for the record, County Manager Eric Brown, we had a similar request from Commissioner Herman recently, and our budget director, Lori Cook, I think did a good job of, who couldn't be here today, by the way, did a great job of answering what's in indigent funds, what's in the indigent fund versus what's in senior services. So, I'd be happy to get that to you. The highlight is that, think of senior services as a subset of indigent funds. Indigent funds, by statute, all counties are required to provide, includes things like indigent burials or veterans' benefits. There are a bunch of buckets in there that are much broader than senior services, but we do have it broken out. Lori did a great job, and I'd be happy to provide that to you.
Thank you, Manager Brown. Yeah, I'd like to see that because, you know, I'm broke, I'm out of money, I don't have any funds, I'm financially embarrassed. I mean, there's so many different buckets you could have to say the same thing, and I'm trying to figure out what this is, but it'd be helpful to see what the buckets are.
Absolutely.
And what do you think about the economic impact of the county's payroll? Do you think that's something that has any merit to share in the future with how that money's being reinvested or used and recycled? And I know there's tables that show when, you know, somebody has, you know, $50 million in a community, how many times that's regenerated and how it's spent and what it does for C-taxes and other things.
Commissioner Clark, through you, Madam Chair, for the record, Abby Yakoven, Chief Financial Officer. Yes, sir. I do think that that's relevant. And let us see what we can get you on that because we do have 3,000 employees here, or almost just over 3,100 employees here. And so, we do shop locally, we do live locally, and so, we do stimulate the economy.
And we're a major employer in the area. I know Renown is about 7,200 employees, and we're about half of that. So, I mean, we're major employers here in the area, and the money gets spent from everything, from babysitters to pizza parlors to tanning booths to you name it. And it's supporting the community as well.
Yes, sir. Excellent point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you, Chair Hill. I have a few questions as well, if I may.
Yes.
I'm wondering if you could share, based on signed and die, the legislature coming to a close soon, and who knows if there'll be a special session, but the bottom line is, do you have any indication of any impact that may occur based on the policy that's being maybe codified just within a few weeks possibly? And then, just a second as a follow-up to that, if in fact, there is an impact, based on your outlining the statutory requirements in terms of submitting on June 1st and the legal steps, regulatory steps that have to be followed, how would that work? So, if something did come up that was an impact, is there a provision, obviously, in the NRS that would provide an amendment, if you will, possible recommendation based on that legislative impact?
Yes, Abby Yakoven, for the record, through you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Andriola, yes, the NRS specifies that we can augment the budget. There are some caveats to it, but mainly when there's additional revenue or additional beginning fund balance over and above what was budgeted. But we also have contingency, and while we don't like to use it, and we went from 3% contingency in the '23 budget to just over 1% in the '24 budget, so we don't want to encourage use of it right away. We could go there if we had to. Or we could try to absorb, as you know, we historically underspend our budgets, we could try to absorb whatever the legislative impact is.
Just back to, is there any indication? I know that we get legislative briefings for various bills that might be impacting the county. Is there anything on the radar that you're aware of that could have an impact? I mean, I know it's hard because anything can change until it's signed into law, but I was just curious, is there anything that you're watching that has a financial impact?
Yes, ma'am, through you, Madam Chair. There is a translation bill that we are watching, and we will accommodate it if and when it becomes law, and we will make sure to comply with all new legislation that comes.
Great. Thanks.
And as your legislative rep, I can say that we are talking about that weekly, and actually, Ms. Matievich, I think we'll be talking about it. It sounds like the manager was about to pipe in, too. But we, it's a better session than last session, I'll tell you that, because of bail hearings. Last session was a huge impact to this commission because we had to up our attorneys in the DA's office and the PD's office and the APD's office because of bail hearings. So, I think that hopefully, knock on wood, it's not going to be that same level of impact. And Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, I was going to say exactly what you just said. In context of the last three years, this one, knock on wood, is not troubling for us at this point.
Okay, thank you. But anything is subject to change during a legislative session, so I guess we'll all be waiting until we see what happens. I have a couple other questions, if I may. Based on, obviously, walking in and trying to catch up in terms of the budget and looking at the corn fairy study as an example, I have concerns that... at the corn fairy study as an example, I have concerns that we could possibly accelerate the retro pay. So, having said that, I realize that there are requirements for the filing of the budget, and I'm not here to stop that filing, but I am encouraging, when the time becomes appropriate for a possible motion, to request that in four months, that in proposed budget to look at, not waiting for the full seven months of the retro pay, but to actually have that accelerated. I realize that the C-Tax, I realize there's a lot of uncertainty, whether it be the legislative session, where it be C-Tax, so maybe it is soft. There are always variables that, you know, no one has a crystal ball to see what those outcomes are. But my, my comment is that I would like to really have an opportunity for the commission to look at having that retro pay, I know it's going to start in August, but to look at seeing if there's any possible way to not have it spread out and to have it accelerated, as I mentioned, to make all the employees whole. I think there's a, you know, there's a culture in any workplace, most people who leave, actually leave because they don't feel valued. And having a pay is one form of being valued. It's certainly one form. There's a lot of other attributes and characteristics that provide an employee to feel that they are being valued and their contributions are being recognized. And there are a lot of employees here, and there's no, there's no comment in any derogatory way towards what has already occurred for the current leadership that had already received the pay. But my concern is making all of the employees have the ability to not wait. And I think the corn fairy study offered an opportunity to look at equitable pay and getting everyone as best as possible, an opportunity for a level playing field to be competitive. We have great people. I have just been really impressed with the staff, with you, my friend, as well, and everyone that I've been working with. Questions are answered promptly, the intelligence and dedication and commitment of the staff and county manager, really the leadership that you have in place is really something to be proud of. However, there are a lot of people that have a sentiment, in my opinion, that need to be, just not wait for their pay, really, to be honest with you. So, I'm hoping that if that were possible, and I don't know what the statutory, so I am getting to my question. I don't know what the statutory requirement is to make such a request, not to approve the retro pay right now, to look at bringing this back in formance and seeing with everything that we have in terms of the facts that are available, if there's a provision that can actually accelerate that. So, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, let me start with what I know. We can certainly always brief you on economic times, on the state of our revenue, on how C-Tax is doing, on property tax collections are pretty stable, but we can certainly give you an update. We can give you an update on the inclined settlement payments that are going out and a general economic and financial update. I'd have to think about how that piece of the corn fairy would work, and I'd like to get back to you on that, if I might.
But Ms. Yocobin, sorry.
That's okay.
I think what Commissioner Andriola is saying, is a budget augmentation possible?
It depends on whether or not we have additional revenue or an additional funding source for the item. So, it depends on how, when we close the books at the end of this year, if we have enough carryforward for that.
And I think that's all she's asking.
Okay.
And so, she can have an appropriate motion, you know, to move forward with this. Certainly, no commitment from you.
Okay.
It's something that we're just asking as a board, you know, that, and augmentations come to us all the time throughout the, and after we adopt this budget, we'll be seeing augmentations throughout the year, because things change.
Yes.
So, I think that's really what Commissioner Andriola is asking.
That's what I'm asking. And so, did I preface this by saying I'm catching up? And so, I apologize that the terminology may not have been as clear as it should be, but that is what I'm asking. I'm trying to look at being compliant, but also looking at the augmentation of that budget coming back for consideration, so that we can look at the retro pay and not having it wait so long.
Yes, if it's augmentable, we can bring it back to you. And if not, we can bring you back an economic update and the carryforward amounts in each fund, and we can let you know the reason for that. But yes, we can bring you back the facts and have you make the decision.
Great. And so, when the time is ready, I'm definitely wanting to include that as part of the contingency for the motion, if there is the ability to do so. I have one more item.
Go for it.
So, it isn't new that I brought this up. I am going to follow up in terms of even having a contingency for the motion to include a provision that any discretionary funds that are dispensed by commissioners through, to a nonprofit, that there be some level of accountability for those funds. And essentially, that's a process that staff and through the county manager's leadership could implement. But I think that we have an obligation to have those funds accounted for, as I've mentioned before, and that it be a part of, when the motion is made, I would like that included if, in fact, this board chooses to include it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see DA Edwards has signed in, and so has Commissioner Clark. So, DA Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To follow up on the discussion about augmentation, so the statute on that, that you, you are correct, Madam Chair, you do see quite a bit during, during the year after this is approved, is 354.598005. And that does allow an augmentation to occur if there are revenues, excess revenues that have been identified. And Ms. Yocobin, obviously, has already spoken about the ability to bring that back. So, you could approve budget today, and it could come back down the road after that question is looked at more closely. That doesn't guarantee there would be enough to augment or anything like that, and I think the chair commented on that already, but it is, it is conceptually doable to be brought back. And then, Commissioner Clark, you had, to your question on indigent fund and those aspects, now, I, so I'm not even going to pretend like I'm the expert on the, the particular line items in those funds and those kinds of things. And obviously, honestly, like, thank God for the, the financial people, because like, it's incredible what they do. But in the, on the legal side, there's a special provision in the NRS in Chapter 428 that requires the county to provide for the care of the indigent within the county. And so, that's a longstanding principle, that's, that's part of the statutory framework. It's 428.010, and then, NRS 428.050. I think I'm going off the top of my head, but I think I'm right on both those. And they require the county to provide care for the indigent, and then, 050 of that chapter requires the county to dedicate a portion of ad verum tax to that fund. And Ms. Yocobin can obviously debunk me if I'm off the mark on this, but I think that's the fund that is being referred to for the special accounting purposes for the indigent part, not the homeless part, but the indigent part. So, there's some of the legal background. Thank you.
And she's nodding in agreement. Okay, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. You know, I was asking more just so I would have a better understanding of what it is. When I get asked that question and I say, I don't know, well, I want, I want a better understanding of it, whether I like it, whether I don't like it, I'd at least like to understand the reasoning behind that. So, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Back to, I was trying to tie a few things here together, and I guess I'll put them even closer. The economic impact of a payroll in a community is, creates to the vibrancy of the community. So, we've got an opportunity to create some vibrancy to the, to the economic community here. And we've also got an opportunity to honor and tell the folks that work for us, the thirty-one hundred folks that, that work for the county, that they're valued, and we want to make sure that they understand we're valued. We're out of business if those folks are not working here, and if they're not working to capacity, and if their morale's affected. We're just not doing the best that we can do. So, how do we do the best we can do? We show everybody who works here that, that we honor them and we respect the work that they're doing. So, that's what I'm asking. You know, it isn't to say pit one group against the other and say, somebody got a head start, although I personally feel that happened, but that's my personal opinion. But at the end of the day, I care about what the workers think here, the workers that think here, and I want them to know that I'm standing up for them, and that's extra six million dollars is, you know, that's real money, but in a billion-dollar budget, that's not that big of a deal. And if it goes out in the, knowing Americans the way I know Americans, nobody's going to open Swiss bank accounts with this raise. They're going to go spend it. They're going to put it out in the economy, and it's going to get used. Everything from oil changes, to tires, to restaurants, to ballet lessons, whatever people spend their dough on, and it's going to get generated again and again in the economy. And, and so, it's a good thing for morale, and it's a good thing for the economy to, to catch these people up as soon as we can. And, and it's a goodwill gesture to people that work here. I understand it's harder and harder to find people. You know, the best way to, the best way to keep people is keep the people that you have happy, instead of trying to go out and mine for other folks. So, again, that's my point here, is let's make people feel inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you to Ms. Yocobin and your wonderful team, your communication and consistency with us as a body is very greatly appreciated. I'm prepared to make a motion, but before I do, I have a clarifying question regarding Commissioner Andriola's request to kind of iron out some details regarding district funds reporting and transparency. Is that appropriate for this type of agenda item, or is that better agendized at a future time to discuss in length processes?
Or managed by staff?
Yeah, internal.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, and I, I apologize for doing this, but for Ms. Yocobin, the, there are line items in the budget that are for Commissioner District spending, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so what I think Commissioner Andriola's question pertains to is, she's interested, it sounds like, in certifying and approving the budget today, which includes those line items. And then, I think she wants staff to, as part of that approval, begin developing, you know, accounting criteria for, for those funds. I, I do think it would be, I think the message has been stated, and I do think that's part, definitely part of the discussion of the budget. So, I think you're within agenda topic by having the discussion on that. I do think it would be preferable if an item came back at a future agenda, on a future agenda, that said, you know, possible action to develop accounting standards for Commission District Special Fund spending, so that it was separated out from the actual approval and certification of the budget. I think it'd be preferable and clearer if it were done that way.
May I?
Yes, Mr. Manager.
For the record, County Manager Eric Brown, Commissioner Andriola, we already have accountability standards built into the community reinvestment grants that we have given nonprofits in the region for the past year. That was one of the requirements of the ARPA funding that we were blessed with in the county. So, my recommendation would be, and for my DA counterpart, please don't call them accounting standards. I, I think these are accountability measures, would be a better term, if that captures, Commissioner, the spirit of what you're trying to accomplish. We could, staff could certainly bring something back to you in the next thirty days or so, if that's your desire to, for the commission to review and make comment on. I will say one thing, which is, my experience over the last three years has been, many times, the discretionary funds that commissioners choose to use are for purposes that are not easily documentable, if that's the word, from an accountability standpoint. Many of the organizations or nonprofits that are recipients may struggle with reporting and, or it's a one-time donation, such as the generator that Commissioner Herman provided to Red Rocks. I, I'm not arguing one way or another, I just, it's a, historically, it is, it has been a different category of giving than grants, which, where you clearly need accountability and there need to be outcomes and those kinds of things. Now, the commission may decide to go that direction, that's fine. I just think it's important to acknowledge that. I would recommend that the staff bring you some recommendations at a future meeting in the next thirty days.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So, I'm not trying to make this complicated. I think it is funny when, you know, District Attorney Edwards uses accountability, that, I mean, if he starts using GAAP, I'm just saying, he's definitely moved into the accounting world. My simplicity with this is not necessarily to create an accounting, trackable, turn-in-receives and all of that. That, that's not what I'm, I'm saying. You know, when you submit a grant, I'm very familiar with various levels of reporting. What I'm talking about is as simple as just having the nonprofit come back and say that the funds were, you know, I affirm that the funds were spent as designated, and as simple as just signing a legal statement saying that they were used for that purpose. So, I'm not trying to create a burden on any nonprofit at all. I just feel that there's an important component, and I think we all know what I'm trying to achieve. So, if the recommendation then is for staff to actually, to be honest with you, I don't necessarily feel that we have to have, this is my sentiment, have to have a review of the process that's going to be put into place. I think it can be as simple as the nonprofit certifies that the funds were spent legally as intended and as dispersed, without, you know, creating a lot of burden on staff at Washoe County or burden on the nonprofit. I just feel like there should be something that documents that the funds were spent with the intent that they were dispersed. That's really the simplicity that I'm talking, but the accountability is there, and it's a trackable item. So, I, I guess, you know, if the sentiment of the board is to have us review all of that, I, that's not where I wanted to go, to be honest with you. So, I don't want to create a stalemate here in terms of having this drilled down to this one point, I'm moving forward with it.
Yeah, let's not do that, because it's definitely not agendized.
So, I don't. I don't, exactly. So, I just want to bring that up. That's not my intent.
Okay, that's what you, you've given the direction of what you want to see.
That's it.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any other board comment before I go to public comment and then, a motion by Commissioner Garcia?
I'd like to make a comment. Thank you for recognizing me. I'd like, I want to support Commissioner Andriola's talk about this. I, I don't want to see, you know, minutia either, but I'll tell you, I haven't given out any, any funds yet, but when I am going to give out funds, I'm going to reach out to the, the bodies that I'm considering and ask them, if I gave you some funds, what would you do with it? I'd like to find out what, what the intent is. You know, we're going to have a party with it, or we're going to do something with it? So, again, that might be a way to simplify this. It's just, I'm thinking about donating some money to your organization, could you tell us what you might do with it?
And I don't want to beat down this horse, but if you look at the agenda items for Commissioner donation funds, you will see there are specific things that these funds are allocated to. When commissioners do allocate the funds, they are looking at a specific project that is actually asked by staff. But we, we got that.
I'm going to cut, cut to the chase then. Maybe when we have it on the agenda, that we're giving five thousand dollars to somebody, and you might have a little note next to it, what they're intending to do, so the public has an understanding.
It's in the, yep, it's in the agenda.
Okay, all right, very good.
But I hear you out. So, okay, now, any other commissioner comments? Seeing none on the budget, Madam Clerk, public comment. Seeing none on the budget, Madam Clerk, public comment.
Do you need the overhead?
Yes, please. Penny Brock for the record, please enter my comments and handouts into the record. I come to you as a taxpayer, a constituent and a voter. And when I looked at this budget, I couldn't believe what I was seeing. In fact, I had to call a friend and say, how much is that? She looked at it too and she goes, wait, that can't be right. So it is shocking that the budget is over $1 billion. That's a B as in boy, $1 billion for 500,000 population. I compared it with Clark County. They've got 2.29 million people and their budget is under $2 billion. They have over four times the population we have. And yet their budget, so to speak, is much larger than Washoe's budget. Something is wrong and we, the taxpayers, want to know why. The other thing that I found shocking was, as a voter, I thought when I voted for treasurer, I was voting for the person that was going to oversee the financials of Washoe County. In essence, I was voting for a CFO. It was shocking to me to learn that he's not the CFO. The other thing that was shocking to me is that the CFO is under the county manager. I don't understand why all of our financial people are not under the treasurer's office. That gives accountability and transparency to the voters. So I don't know if there's any way that that could happen, but I think we, the voters, the taxpayers, would like that to happen. So some of the problems with this budget. Earlier in another meeting, we saw the budget was going to be $1,604,000,000 or whatever. See, I can't even say it, it's overwhelming to me. Now we learn that there's a new proposed budget and it's greater than the $1,640,000 whatever. It's been increased by $1,248,387. That also is shocking. So we don't know why Manager Brown has asked for those additional funds. One thing I found in the proposed changes is that the manager's office wants a conflict counselor. Will be in an appointed position. The other thing.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Madam Clerk?
Not in chambers, but I do have an email to put on the record.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Garcia, I hand it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt and certify the final budget for FY 2024 as outlined, which includes the changes regarding the FTEs and reclassification as outlined on Attachment A.
And do we have a second?
I guess we have to call for a second before discussion proceeding. Is that correct? Shoot.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. May I call for discussion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. With the motion as it stands right now, does that mean that I can, the commission can see the augmented budget if in fact there is a possibility to include a provision for retro pay with the analysis that they'll provide?
Was that, so does the, do the staff understand that direction and given?
Madam Chair, is it on now?
Try again.
Madam Chair?
I think it is.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, Abby Yakobin for the record, Chief Financial Officer, yes, I understand the directive and yes, we will come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, I just wanted that clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. So with the motion and a second to approve the tentative budget for fiscal year 2024, do we have any other comments? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just find it interesting that with the fact that Ms. Penny Brock brought up about our budget being so disproportionate compared to Clark County, this is the largest county in the state, has a budget, has four times as many people that we have and our budget is more than half of theirs. So I just thought that was an unusual comparison.
Okay, well, with a motion and a second, we've made our comments. All of those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, and I think this carries 3-1. All right, thank you very much. We now will, oh, we can end this public hearing and now we will go to item 11 because I know that is attached to item 10. And Mr. Manager.
You're right. Hang on a second. Item 11 is a decision impossible action to approve with or without change the county manager's recommended capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2024 through 2028 and direct the county manager to submit the CIP in the state, to the state of Nevada and others in August 1st, 2023, as required by NRS 354.5945. FY year 24, 2024, total appropriations of $185,195,329, which requires all local government annually to prepare a five-year capital improvement plan to be submitted to the State Department of Taxation and County Debt Management Commission by August 1st of each year. The CIP is a five-year plan for the county's capital improvements for parks facilities, including trails, open space and regional parks, libraries, road and purview of the county purchase of light and heavy fleet equipment, utilities, infrastructure, capital outlay for major equipment and county buildings and other facilities. The CIP is limited to capital projects with an estimated cost of $100,000 or more.
Just a moment, I just, do we have a quorum right now? We need a quorum so we can break if you need a break. Do you need a break?
I'll wait until she comes back.
Okay. Continue on, Mr. Manager.
Okay, the CIP is a five-year plan for the county's capital improvements for parks facilities, including trails, open space and regional parks, libraries, roads and under purview of the county, purchase of light and heavy equipment, utilities, infrastructure, capital outlay for major equipment and county buildings and other facilities. The CIP is limited to capital projects with an estimated cost of $100,000 or more for assets that have a lifespan of more than one year as part of the reporting requirements of the state and under Board of County Commissioner policies.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And Ms. Yakobin, you are back. Thank you.
Good morning again. So thank you, Madam Chair, Manager Brown, Abby Yakobin for the record, CFO for the county, and we will review the capital improvement program. Just a friendly reminder on the front slide, it said this, but you just adopted the budget for the first year of the capital improvement program, but we plan out five years, maybe more informally, many years, because we're looking at what we need in, you know, out further than five years, but we formally plan for five years. And then we file with the state on August 1st as required. So as I talked about a little bit before, the county has a really sophisticated infrastructure scorecard where we score all of our assets so that we can figure out which assets need the priority of funding in any given year so that we allow our assets to stay hopefully in close to the same condition or the same condition as they currently are. Our goal is always to raise the grade and we've placed that on the slide. We find it to be such a high priority. We try to our absolute best to connect our capital improvement program with your strategic initiatives and for example, there are a couple of examples here, sustainability outcomes. I'm thinking of LED light conversions. That's aligned with your strategic vision and we like doing that, spending the taxpayer money according to the vision. Inclusive and accessibility. When we do our parks, we want everyone to be able to participate and use our parks and use our playgrounds and our equipment. So those are some examples of those connections between strategic vision and where we place the county funds. Here's a summary, certainly will not go over every number, but it's a reference material should anyone ask you in the future. Again, the plan for year one that you just adopted and the budget is $185.2 million over the five-year forecast. And of course, any of those outer years can change, but right now it's at $350,300,000 and I'm going to round here for ease. We have a CIP committee. Whenever an item comes forward internally, we talk about it and you can see the people on the left who are on the committee. We all have very different perspectives and ask very different types of questions to ensure that only the most needed and affordable projects come forward at any given time. To show where we are spending our money, I really like this slide a lot because in the capital program, you see about $95 million and look right up on the top right, left-hand areas, the voters at $12.6 million. That was a very clear directive of yours to make the voting software more modern to, I believe we need a couple of server upgrades, some infrastructure upgrades in that area. So that's right, right front and center. And technology infrastructure projects, when we talk about the staffing levels kind of dipping down and then being constant over the last 15 years or so, there's your technology improvements that help with that. And included in these types of things are things like the P-25 radio upgrades. We have some budget software in there that'll make us able to report quicker and more accurately to you. We're very pleased about that. Parks, we just talked about inclusive projects. We've got parks projects there and the library, of course, is very well coveted by the community as well. So we have these in here. And not to go over every item, but just to show you some examples of what's in here. There's the voters at $12.6 million on this page to show you again that it is there. There's the radio system. There are some HVAC upgrades that are very kind of behind the scenes, but very needed to serve our population and keep people comfortable in our facilities. And I'll leave you there to look at that at your leisure. One thing I'd like to highlight about this in the software area is the Second Judicial Court Case Management System. We're very proud to have been able to fund that. The court's software system is antiquated. It doesn't mean it's not functioning and working and doing exactly what they need. So everything is processing, but they need to modernize it and we're able to do that this year and we're very proud about it and we can't wait to see the outcome. Again, the budget software is in there. We're very pleased about that. And the P-25. Here are some parks projects, certainly spread out throughout the county and throughout the different parks. Again, the accessibility and the inclusivity and the people using our parks and facilities. Utilities fund, we talked about the utilities fund in the budget presentation being the largest of the enterprise funds and you can see that they have some very large projects coming up, some stemworf plant expansions, some force main expansions and things like that to keep us treating the water that's coming through the system and keep our residents Roads and equipment, the things that stick out to me here are street sweepers to keep our roads tidy and able to be traveled upon with the most efficiency and slurry seal. For certain, we don't want to do reconstructions on the roads often, as often, you know, we want to do them as infrequently as possible because they're expensive and they inconvenience people. So slurry seal will greatly extend the life of our roads and we like to do those seals and there are some locations up there on the slide for your review at your leisure. And of course, we contribute every year and then buy new equipment as needed. We have replacement schedules based on the useful lives of the different pieces of equipment and we replace them as we need. This is a note here to talk about why when we look at the capital improvement program, sometimes the numbers are 192 million versus 185. The difference is some services and supplies, but in addition, this capital facilities tax. This is a tax that comes in and then is paid back out to different state entities and so they're not technically our capital outlays and so we don't book them as such. So just a reconciling item. Some items here for your perusal that have not been budgeted in the first year of the plan, but we hear quite a lot of buzz about. So no final decisions have been made on those needs. They may come up in the future. I've heard about them myself. And indeed, they may, in full disclosure, require the use of debt financing because some of these are really large projects and we would not have the cash to pay for them all at once. So if that does happen, certainly we would bring the project and the bond issue at one time so that you could see what we're really going to be paying over the term of that bond for that project. And again, just a friendly reminder that only year one of the five-year CIP is adopted today because that's your appropriation authority. You just set budget and appropriation authority, spending authority for year one, starting on July 1st of '23, ending on June 30th of 2024. And with that, be happy to answer questions. Please don't ask me too many questions about asphalt or hydraulics or the stemworf reconstruction as I will be very blank on that. But I certainly do, we have experts on those.
Great, thank you so much for this. I look to my commissioners, any questions on this CIP? Very exciting, all these projects that we're doing. Not seeing anyone signed in, so Madam Clerk, public comment.
Penny Brock for the record, please enter my comments into the public record per NRS. Of course, I've got problems with this budget. Number one, I tried to find out, is Washoe County in debt? And I was told, no, Washoe County is not in debt, but I've learned by looking through this budget that we are in debt. It's called a debt bond. So that is a concern in this climate that we're living in, federal government, $31 trillion in debt. Looks like locally, we, the taxpayers, are also in debt. This is not a good thing. I'm concerned about projects in this budget that are called on-designated. Why on-designated projects with huge amounts of money? The CARES campus, they're going to get $5,138,090? Everywhere I look, it's more money for the CARES campus, again, for 750 homeless guests. There's also the Parks Fund, Allen's Park Playground, $498,000 that was approved at the May 9th meeting. I don't understand why it's again on the 2024 budget. Is this what we call double dipping? Of course, I have a heartburn about the voter project, the estimated cost of over $12 million for voter new software server equipment of some kind, ballot extraction machines. How do we know it's going to cost? It's an estimated cost. Did they get two RFPs? I mean, how do they know it's going to cost $12 million? There's general fund projects, again, over $1 million and we don't know what those are. There's a health fund of $100,000. What is a health fund doing in this budget? Then another $29,000 for the homelessness. What is that for? Then there's another line item that says other restricted revenue fund expenditures. $552,216 for what? We, the taxpayers, the voters, we want specifics. We don't like things that are on-designated. What's the money going for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Elise Weatherly. I don't know if you guys remember that movie about the president, the fake president that came in and all of a sudden he had this budget meeting, right? And everybody was there was flower-gasted because he wanted to go over each and every item. And I went, that's my kind of guy. It's like, don't, I don't want to take anybody's word for anything. I want to see the bids. I want to see the numbers. I want to see the ROI, you know, see what kind of return we're going to get on that money. I'm totally an ITer upgrader, but shopping around is always a good thing because what I've noticed is that a lot of people just assume that these companies and business know what the heck they're talking about. So I would be one of those kind of almost in. So I would be one of those kind of almost internal audit people that sat down and looked at every item and see if they were justified. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Okay. Thank you so much. I am now looking for any additional commissioner comments or a motion. Commissioner Garcia.
Madam Chair, again, thank you for the presentation. All of these projects are really exciting, especially as we look and consider the constituents of all ages throughout the county that often get to, you know, experience these things, touch them, see them, feel them, and it just improves the overall quality of life and infrastructure is not something people get all that jazzed about, but I particularly love the proactive nature of it. So with that, I move to adopt without changes the recommended capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2024 through 2028 and submit the CIP to the state of Nevada and others by the designated timelines as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Andreola. So motion is second. Any questions on the motion, comments on the motion, seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And we've got, the motion passes unanimously. So we are doing great on schedule. What I would like to do is I would like to now go to item seven and see how far we can get through item seven and take a break at 1:00 and then we'll come back for the rest of the items. So Mr. Manager.
Item seven is a request by the county manager through the Washoe County Clerk pursuant to Washoe County Code 3.030 to initiate an amendment to Washoe County Code, Chapter 5, which is administrative and personnel adding section 5.023 entitled Registration and Regulation of Lobbyists and to direct the county clerk to submit the request to the district attorney's office for preparation of a proposed ordinance and accordance with Washoe County Codes 2.040. If initiated, include the direction to the district attorney's office to model the ordinance in this, on the city of Reno's existing lobbyist registration framework in Reno Municipal Code, Chapter 2.22 by generally defining lobbyist to mean someone who receives compensation from another to communicate with county policymakers to influence policy, requiring lobbyists to register with the county and wear visible ID credentials in county, on county premises, allowing the board to set fees to register as a lobbyist by resolution and providing penalties for non-compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And just as a quick introduction on this item, I did ask for the staff to pull this together and I really appreciate how quickly they did this, the DA's office and the manager's office. This is something that I know that the city of Reno does and it creates just a lot more transparency. Voters, our constituents, our citizens need to know when people are in our chambers or when they come to visit us on county premises, if they are being paid and who they are being paid by. And so that is what I'm looking for this board to support. I know this board believes in transparency and believes that folks can, you know, we should know the motives of folks when they're coming and speaking to board members or to public comment. So I'm happy to hear any board discussion or questions on this item. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With all the world's pressing problems, this one's almost kind of silly, but I'll go forward with it anyhow. Registration of lobbyists, do we have forms that the lobbyists need to fill out? I'd like to see and know what questions the county will be asking. It should be part of our agenda packet so our constituents can review and see how to speak to it. I don't think any of us should vote for this until we see the paperwork individuals are being asked to complete and speak, to complete, to speak in front of us. If we're going to move forward with this, to have the lobbyists register to appear in front of us, how about the commissioners? Are we going to have a requirement for the commissioners to put on record when an individual appears in front of the commission on the agenda item? If they've received any contributions to your political campaign, have you received any perks, anything that of value from a lobbyist? Needs to have full and complete transparency on both sides of this equation. If people are paying to influence you, we want to know if you've been influenced by receiving that payment. That's the counterpoint to this. This is the balance of this equation. We need to take a look at that. Are we attempting to point out an individual who's a lobbyist for a group, business, individual, nonprofit, et cetera? County candidates accept money and donations from these people, go to lunch or dinner with them? Should they tell us about that? Should we also enact an ordinance that causes us, the commissioners, to disclose if we've taken campaign contributions? Doesn't this seem a bit disingenuous? If we don't think about this ordinance, we should look at both sides of it. We'll be voting on what we need to disclose if they have contributed to our campaigns. I've done a little bit of research on the city of Reno. On October 12th, 2016, the city of Reno adopted this ordinance, their number is 6415, Registration of Lobbyists. The city council adopted this ordinance in 2017 in an effort to bring additional transparency in policymaking in the lobbying process. Transparency is a priority of the city council. You know, it goes on and on and on about this, but I think at the end of the day, what's good for the goose should be good for the gander. If somebody's have to register to talk to us and try and influence us, we should have to fully disclose if anybody's influenced us by talking to us. So that's just my point and I'd like to see exactly what the questionnaire is, what the application is, what type of questions that the quote-unquote lobbyist is supposed to fill out to get approval and get a badge? Are they going to have a badge? Does lobbyist not have to walk through the metal detector? I mean, on and on and on. What do the lobbyists get from this and what are we really trying to disclose here? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. And I'll just remind the body, this is an initiation and what I love about the Washoe County processes, staff come to us and ask, do you want to open this chapter? We give direction during this time and we vote to open the chapter and to make these changes. We don't have the specifics. We will give that direction to staff and they'll bring that to us as a first reading. We can always make changes at that time and that's a perfect opportunity for you to see that form, to ask those questions. But yes, people will wear a badge as part of the staff report and they will need to sign up and they will have, there will be transparency. If someone is wearing a badge that says paid lobbyist or however we use that language, it's an opportunity for you to go online and check out, okay, who is their employment and who are they being paid by? And actually, we do have that transparency as board members. We have an ethics law we have to follow. Secretary of State requires all of our financials to be disclosed, so we actually do have to follow that and this is a missing piece of transparency that this board is not allowing the public to understand who is talking to us and who they represent. So that is why I'm bringing this to the board. Do I have any other board? Commissioner Andreola? Yes, Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, the reason, I wanted to make my comments at the onset of this before it's brought to us in an almost complete form without a lot of input. I think it's important to, again, to ask the question about, and you pointed out some things that are very important that would be on our financial disclosure, but for those of us in a year that we're not running, we file that once a year. So somebody might accept a campaign donation in January or February and wouldn't have to disclose it till the next year. So I think it's important that the individuals that are on this body go on the record before it's disclosed with the Secretary of State with their campaign contributions. We may not know for almost a year if anybody's done that. So again, it would be disclosed after the fact. I think it should be disclosed before the fact. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Andreola?
I wanted to get, well, first of all, thanks for the clarification because I wasn't sure exactly how that process works, so I had lots of questions. So we'll wait in terms of how, what we see, but I do have a question to DA Edwards and my question is, just in the course of an agendized item, whatever that item is, if there is a discussion or interaction with, I'll use the term, the body of the person that is related to the agenda item, isn't there a requirement for the commissioner to actually disclose that I had a conversation or I had a meeting or I've heard from this particular person or that particular person? Don't we have an obligation from a transparency standpoint to actually disclose that if in fact, that is what occurs?
Give me just one second.
While you're looking that up, I wanted to just make a comment. In another life, I certainly had, was a lobbyist, a registered lobbyist and many meetings that I had to attend, I had to wear and fill out what those requirements were. So I will be encouraged to see how this process works, but I can say there is a sense of transparency, to be honest, in terms of walking in as a lobbyist representing the organization or whoever it is that you're being paid to represent. In my case, I was the employee, but I still was a lobbyist and I still was, had an obligation to try and provide as much information to policymakers as possible, both in a nonprofit capacity as well. So I think it will be interesting to see how this process plays out. So maybe that gave, did I stretch enough time for the DA to find? I'll keep on talking.
It was very eloquent. I was hoping you would continue for another 45 seconds or so.
Commissioner Clark signed in, so you're good. We can come back. Is that okay?
That's perfect.
I will jump back in or ask to be recognized when I feel like I have everything.
Sorry, thank you.
No, you're fine. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. I'm just, just the words, just on their face, receives compensation from another. How are we going to monitor if somebody's receiving compensation? How do we know that?
Well, I love how honest our citizens are. So I think that they will be honest. This will be a misdemeanor.
Well, again, if somebody's trying to be nefarious, they're not going to fully disclose it. So how do you force honest people to be honest? I mean, lock keep honest people honest. I mean, there's a point in time where you don't really know. If you suspect that somebody's taking money for votes or something, I get it, but you know, to have somebody in here, who knows who's being paid by who? Are you going to have financial, everybody's going to have a financial, an IRS-style audit to their income to find out if that's actually a fact? I mean, how do you, how far, how deep do you have to go in the weeds to even figure this thing out?
Thank you.
Okay. Again, receives compensation from another to communicate with a policymaker. And what are the penalties? I'm glad you brought it up. It's going to be, it's going to be a misdemeanor for this? How many misdemeanors does it take to become a felony in doing this? I mean, how does this work? It just, it just seems silly, as I said, started off with. If, you know, this isn't, if you're a paid lobbyist and you want to announce it, you should do that, but if somebody's just talking to somebody, how do we know if there's any compensation? How are you ever going to know that? I can't read minds. Thanks.
This is great direction to staff, too. I think that when they, if we choose to initiate, that will be something that they'll be able to address for us.
And lastly, well, we, if they have to wear badges, will we be allowed to vote on a particular style of badge or color or is it a magnetic badge or is it a sticky badge or, you know, arm bracelet? I mean, what all, how far are we going to go with this silliness? Thank you.
Great questions. Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment for us?
I do.
Penny Brock, for the record, please enter my comments and hand out into the record. I found this absolutely shocking. Number one, in the description of it, it says this was decided at the April 26th meeting. There was no public meeting on April 26th? Well, maybe there was. I was, anyway, but regardless, this is absolutely shocking because again, I see it as a unilateral decision by one county commissioner. I see it as an attack on our First Amendment rights. Why do we have to be, the First Amendment says we have a First Amendment right and the right to redress our government. You are our government. Why do we have to be a registered lobbyist? When you look at the city councils, it says represents an individual. That means I represent myself, so I'm going to have to register as a lobbyist? That doesn't make sense. That's a violation of my First Amendment right. What will be the definition of lobbying? The lobbying efforts and the communication? Definitions matter. Words matter. What am I, as an American citizen, looking at? What are we, as the Washoe County residents, looking at in order to come before an open body that we are to have the right to do? Let's see, what else was there? Will this amendment dictate that anyone that wants to make a comment at any time during the meeting will be required to register as a lobbyist? Will the gentleman that came last time and had to wait till the end of the meeting, will he have to register as a lobbyist? This could scare away citizens from coming and speaking to our elected officials. This body is very intimidating and it's hard for them to come and then when you tell them they have to register to be a lobbyist? That is not what our form of government is all about. It should concern everyone, no matter if you're a Democrat, Republican, independent or nonpartisan. This is a clear effort of the chambers to keep the public from attending and speaking up. No matter what, it is wrong and I would urge the commissioners to vote no on moving forward to ever have this brought up again. Thank you.
I do have documents that I will distribute to the board for Mr. Finley.
Do you want to go ahead and start or do you want me to? Please enter my comment, these documents into the record per NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the financial management and comptroller career field of the United States Air Force. Certain constituents are being singled out and targeted by the Board of County Commissioners. This commission should not amend Washoe Code, Chapter 5, with a section called Registration and Regulation of Lobbyists. On April 25th, one of your constituents by the name of Janet Butcher made the statement that her name was associated with a group and reiterated that she is not associated with the group or any other group. What makes the commission think she is a lobbyist? Is it the amount of time she commits to keeping the commission informed? How is the continued enthusiastic engagement by a motivated constituent so alarming? I would be concerned if she stopped coming here and sharing her thoughts. Under the Reno Municipal Code, Chapter 22, sought to be mirrored, any person who knowingly violates any provisions such as misrepresenting themselves as a lobbyist is guilty of a misdemeanor. Any person who knowingly violates this chapter is subject to a civil penalty in an amount not to exceed $500, to which the city- not to exceed $500, to which the city attorney may recover the penalty in a civil action. In addition, lobbyists may be required to pay an annual fee set by the city council. Does the commission seek to tax and litigate Ms. Butcher into silence? How would she go about proving that she isn't a lobbyist? Would you litigate, and then use discovery to seize her emails and phone records? Are you afraid of Ms. Butcher, or are you acting on behalf of lobbyists that are afraid of Ms. Butcher? There is nothing stopping lobbyists from watching the live stream of a meeting, and then texting commissioners which way to vote. A reasonable person would ask themselves, why would lobbyists be physically present during these meetings, when they can simply telecommute from as far away as Washington, DC, or Denver, Colorado? Currently, how many commissioners have an electronic communications device on them? I am unaware of any statute restricting commissioners from having an electronic communications device in their possession during these meetings. For these reasons, I request that the Board of County Commissioners move to reject amending Washoe Code, Chapter 5, and instead consider placing on the agenda an electronic communications restriction on this commission and its appointed officials during meetings, to help mitigate the influence of lobbyists. Such an ordinance would exclude the district attorney and its legal staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Theeson.
I'm totally against this. It looks like just another way to shut the public's comments down. How do you define lobbyist? Any of us could be a lobbyist, as far as you're concerned. You're putting a target on our back. I agree with Scott, as far as all phones, computers, everything should be shut down on the commission desk while this meeting's going on. Because I see one person on the computer all the time, getting her pointers from the lobbyist Porter Group. So I am totally against this. If you want to make a badge, just make it a target with a bullseye, and put it on our back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Green.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the Porter Group. When Bob Lucy was roundly condemned by his constituents and voted out of office, the Porter Group held a large party for Mr. Lucy, with a bunch of important invited guests. So do they pay for that out of their own little fund, or is that part of our county taxpayer dollars, that we pay them every month for lobbying efforts, right? And I think some people are scheduled to go to DC next week with the Porter Group. We pay them for interest. You pay them to lobby for you. I'm a lobbyist. I'm 100% a lobbyist. I am here to lobby for what I think is right. I'm here to lobby for what I think is good, and the Constitution, and the laws, and what's best for the community. Nobody pays me to be here. I solemnly swear under oath that no one is paying me to be here today. Okay? No one's ever paid me to be here at a county commission meeting, ever in my entire lifetime. So I don't know who you guys are trying to target, but I don't think it's going to work. These people that come and comment all the time, they come and comment because it's what they truly believe. I mean, when I was still working at the county, I watched Sam Denee sit here, and play the guitar, and do public comment ad nauseam. He did it because that's what he wanted to do. He's bored, and that's what he wanted to do. But Commissioner Clark has some important points, I think, in that there's no check and balance on what's happening after hours with all of the commissioners. And you guys get a lot of influence from people wanting things from you, and asking you to do things for them. You guys were all but ready to sign, seal, and deliver Katie Simon-Holland to be on the library board. There was no interviews, or anything like that. How did you guys even know who she was, or what her bona fides were? It happened because people influenced, they sent messages, they said, "Hey, this is a good person," blah, 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 blah. I'm not saying that you guys didn't know her, but I'm just saying, that's how this kind of stuff happens. And I hate to bring him up, but he lives large. Mrs. Hill was the only person, the only person on the dais right now, who was here, had had the fortune, or misfortune, to work with Bob. But I saw an email where Bob is getting courted to come have a dinner with the Alaska Airlines folks, when he's on the Reno Sparks, I always screw that out, RSCVA, or whatever it is, to come have dinner at the Eldorado with Rick Murdoch and the Alaska Airlines people. Do you think he disclosed that? I looked, I couldn't find it. So how, you're asking the citizens to, it feels like you're trying to stifle public comment a little bit. It really does. And it kind of feels that way for the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, too. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Susan Van Ness.
Susan Van Ness, for the permanent record. I thank God for the opportunity to talk, because he's the only one that gives me the right. This page on here, it says, "Represents an individual, group, or entity for their interests or benefit." This whole paragraph makes no sense. It's word solid. It could be interpreted anyway. I agree with Commissioner Clark in every point that he made, and everyone else. Speaking of lobbyists, I would like you all to disclose who, where you're going, that you canceled the meeting on June 13. It has to do with lobbyists. I would like to know if you're paying your own airfare. And I think we should still have a meeting on June 13, and only two of you go. That way, we'd still have a quorum, and we could still have our county meeting. But I think you should disclose, as you want all of us to disclose, your attachment to the Porter Group. And I agree that electronic devices should be muted. You should be able to have everything you need when you come in as a county commissioner, and not get feedback for you to read. That is the end, and I hope that you will disclose all of your intentions for June 13. Two go, one stays, and we'll have a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everybody in chambers, but I do have an email that was submitted, that will be placed on the record.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other commissioner comments? Okay. Well, since this was something that I wanted to come before the board, and again, I think there's some confusion by our public commentators, this is, if you are paid to be a lobbyist. But I will, I will be honored to do the motion. I move to approve a request by the county manager, through the Washoe County Clerk, in pursuit to Washoe County Code 3.030, to initiate an amendment to Washoe County Code, Chapter 5, Administration and Personnel, Adding Section 5.023, entitled Registration and Regulation of Lobbyists, and to direct the county clerk to submit the request to the district attorney's office for preparation of a proposed ordinance in accordance with WCC 2.040.
Madam Chair, a second.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Mr. DA Edwards, I see you signed in for comment.
Yes. Just to respond to Commissioner Andriola's question earlier, as the chair indicated, you have disclosure obligations under NRS Chapter 281A. Whenever you have a pecuniary interest in an item, that's a money interest, so, and good or bad, if it could hurt you financially, or it could help you financially in some meaningful way, you have to disclose that. If you have a commitment in a private capacity to the interest of another, those are defined to include things like business relationships, close friendships, those types of things, you have to disclose those on the record. If you've received a gift, or a loan, in connection with a matter, so if a developer offers to take somebody to dinner, or something like that, that would be a gift, and then they come to the commission and have a project in front of you, you would be in a situation where you should disclose that type of thing. So a receipt of a gift or loan. And then the other is, if you yourself have lobbied for somebody appearing in front of you, before some other body within the previous year for compensation, then you have to disclose that as well. I would say that that's very close to a commitment of private capacity, anyway, so it's kind of an overlap between those two. But those are the four categories of the law that you already have to disclose. As commissioners, under your Rules of Procedure 6.7.6, you have a duty to disclose ex parte communications that you may have had with people external to the county, on an item that you're sitting in an adjudicatory capacity on. So those are appeals from, like, the Board of Adjustment, or the Planning Commission, for example, on a land use matter, comes before you. If you have, before that hearing, had ex parte communications, again, for example, with the developer, possibly with neighbors, that are maybe in favor of, or against the project, then, under your rules, you're supposed to disclose those. So there are several disclosure obligations already in existence for you as board members. That's a quick rundown of what those look like.
Thank you for the clarification, and I think it's always a good reminder that we do have those obligations of transparency, and I really appreciate you taking the time to look that up, and share that again with us. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to move forward with this ordinance to Washoe County, Chapter 5, for Registration and Regulation of Lobbyists, and a second by Commissioner Garcia. Any other comments? Commissioner Andriola?
I'm just, in terms of the, just to clarify what you clarified in terms of the process, so we would then see what this all looks like at a future date.
Exactly. That will come back in a first reading.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. All right. And that motion carries... Oh, I need to vote. Three to one. Okay. Thank you very much. I don't know, we may be able to get through a few more items before 1:00 here. So, Mr. Manager, will you please lead us into item eight?
Item eight is the discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators, by Washoe County Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature, to submit all bill draft requests, or the chair, or the board, to be of critical significance to Washoe County. Pending legislative bills can be located at the county website. Current bills the county is tracking, that may be reported, or discussed, are also listed at the county website, under Government Affairs. Due to the constituent, the constraints inherent in the legislative process, a list of specific bills, excuse me, that staff will seek direction from the commission on during this term, will be posted on the website, under Government Affairs, and the Friday before each BCC meeting. Due to the rapid pace of the legislative session, additional bills upon which comment may be sought from the Board of County Commissioners, will be posted as soon as known.
Thank you.
And I believe we have Cadence Matiavich available for us.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Ms. Matiavich.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. For the record, Cadence Matiavich. I have the pleasure of serving as Government Affairs Liaison for Washoe County, here from Carson City, the capital. Madam Chair, you have, I believe, has been submitted to you, and posted on our website, my weekly report from last week, that highlights the bills of interest. And in addition, as Manager Brown indicated, our full list of bills that we're tracking is posted on the website. We don't have any specific bills that we've identified this week, for you to take action on. We are at the point in the session with three weeks to go. The session will adjourn three weeks from yesterday. So there is new legislation being introduced, mostly it pertains to the state budget at this point. Potentially, there could be a few more bills come forward that would directly affect Washoe County, and so, as we know of those, we'll bring them forward. And as we head into these final weeks, looking to continue to advocate for those bills that you have given us a specific direction on, to support, and then also to defeat those bills that you have given us specific direction to oppose. We only have one of those left at this point. And then continuing to monitor bills that fall in line with our legislative principles, and working to address potential unfunded mandates on any of the bills that are still remain to move through the process. We do have a deadline this week for Second House Committee passage, and then, as we move into next week, the full Second House passage. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you, that the board may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for your thorough report. I am just, I remain to be impressed with all the work that you're doing for us this session. Looking to the board on any questions for Ms. Matiavich? I'm not seeing any, so, Ms. Matiavich, you're off the hook. I hope you have a great rest of your day with your hearings.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you getting me in before your break.
Of course. And Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
There is not on this item.
Thank you. We don't need to take action, correct, Mr. DA Edwards?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Manager, if you'll take us into item nine.
Item nine is a recommendation to adopt a resolution to set Washoe County 911 telephone line surcharge to $1 per month for each customer access line to the local exchange of a telecommunications provider, $1 per month for each mobile telephone number assigned to a customer by a supplier of mobile telephone service, and $10 per month for each customer trunk line to the local exchange of a telecommunications provider, to be effective July 1, 2023, and all other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So we have seen this before. Are there any commissioner questions on this item? I'm seeing none. I'd love to have a motion. Commissioner Andriola?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution to set Washoe County's 911 telephone line surcharge to $1 per month for each customer access line to the local exchange of a telecommunications provider, $1 per month for each mobile telephone number assigned to a customer by a supplier of mobile telephone service, and $10 per month for each customer trunk line to the local exchange of a telecommunications provider, to be effective July 1, 2023, and all of the matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. A motion and a second. I now move to our clerk. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do. First up, we have Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record. This is a tax increase on we the people. You can call it a fee, you can call it whatever you want. You just put on us the burden of over a billion-dollar budget. You continue to nickel and dime us to death. We are in a crisis in America financially. We're facing the debt of $31 trillion. The Fed keeps printing money that is inflationary. How are we, those struggling families in this county, those retired, those on fixed income? You might say, "Well, it's only, what is this going to be? A dollar a month for your, if you have a landline, a dollar a month if you have a cellphone, and then there's something about $10 a month for each customer trunk line?" You know what? It all adds up. People are putting their groceries on their credit cards. Now they're getting maxed out on their credit cards. How are they going to eat? Now you're going to put an additional tax on their phones? Many of us use our phone for an emergency, like if we have a car trouble, or whatever. There's also in this, something about law enforcement. Reimbursement of Alamo expenses for body worn or vehicle-mounted camera systems for certain law enforcement agencies. Why is this within this agenda item? That should come under law enforcement. I would plead with you. Do something. Don't put more taxes on we the people, especially when you've just passed an over $1 billion This isn't right. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With a motion and a second for adopting the resolution, any other questions by, on that motion by the commission? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay. And I think that motion carries three to one. Okay. Thank you very much. We now can go into item 12, but I look to the attorney. We don't have a vice chair here. I'm going to need to leave here shortly, and I don't want to take a break when we have people who are here for item 12. Mr. Attorney, do I designate someone to be the chair? How does that work?
Yeah, I think that would be the best way to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the most senior person at the dais, I think we have a tie here. So Commissioner Garcia, do you feel comfortable to get through public comment and Commissioner comments? Okay, great. So when the time comes. Thank you very much. So Mr. Manager, will you lead us into item 12?
Item 12 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that are made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record, please enter my comments and handout into the record. I know you voted on the budget. I didn't have time to get all my comments in about the budget. I know it's been passed, but I want it entered in the record. So what we're talking about is Commissioner, or the manager, Brown's billion-dollar budget. First of all, I would like to know why this isn't the elected treasurer's budget. Again, why is the CFO and comptroller under Brown and not under the elected treasurer? Again, some of the items of concern are the, is the one for welfare, $225,459,000. The debt service, $25 million. Again, the homeless issue, the indigent issue. We have the Corn Fairy Study. I'm not sure if that's in this budget or if it was in the 2022 budget, whenever they did it. So $23 million for the indigent, almost $22 million for the homeless. Again, why? For 750 homeless at the care center? We've never really heard how many homeless we have in Washoe County. I've heard or read maybe 2,000. So how can you keep justifying more and more and more for the homeless? What about our senior citizens? I think in the budget, they're designated to get 3 million. So if you combine the indigent and the homeless, we're looking at almost $45 million, and yet only 3.4 million for the senior population. Many of them are, do not have housing now because their rents have gotten too high or they can't pay their property tax bills. Why are you doing that to the senior population? Why do you keep raising their property taxes when they're on fixed income and they can't even get, if they have any savings, they can hardly get any interest on it to even pay their property tax bill or their energy bill or their phone bill now? So I see the budget as smoke and mirrors. There's many items in it where it's on designated. We don't know where the funds are going. We heard like, well, if we have a surplus, then we're going to put it on other projects. No. If there's a surplus, guess what? It should go back to the property tax owners. And why does the voter register office need so much money? They remodeled twice since the last election. Why does our...
Thank you.
Scott Finley?
I will be distributing documents for Mr. Finley.
Please enter my comment and these documents into the record per NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the financial management and comptroller career field of the United States Air Force. Nevada's open meeting law under NRS 241 is being violated. The Board of County Commissioners needs to make public comments, needs to move public comments back to the beginning of meetings. Since April 25, this commission has taken actions to antagonize its constituency. Shifting public comments away from the beginning of meetings to the end is a method being utilized by the commission to filibuster its constituency into silence. Such actions are misguided, indicative of poor judgment that places this commission and our county as a whole. Instead of your constituency bending the knee, they are speaking up and making a point to provide input whenever possible, especially outside the public comments phase of these meetings. To make matters worse, this commission has the audacity to claim that its very own constituency are the ones who seek to filibuster when it is this commission that initiated the filibuster and continues to antagonize its constituency. Nevada's Attorney General Aaron D. Ford states, "Any practice or policy that discourages or results in preventing public comment, even if technically in compliance with the law, may violate the spirit and intent of the open meeting law." How does moving public comments away from the beginning of meetings to the end violate the spirit and intent of NRS 241? Simply put, these actions discriminate against constituents with disabilities and the elderly. It makes meetings unnecessarily difficult for these constituents and places an extreme burden on them by forcing them to wait eight hours in order to provide public comment. How is a person who is on oxygen supposed to provide public comment when they have to take the bus back home in order to swap out their oxygen cylinder and quickly come back? How is a person with hypersomnia supposed to provide public comment when it is medically necessary for them to go back home to rest in order to function and provide you public comment? How is this public body, the commission, supposed to justify its existence to aid in the conduct of people's business when it sees its constituents as the enemy and takes measures that stifle rather than elevate them? For these reasons, I request that the Board of County Commissioners move public comments back to the beginning of meetings in order to restore the spirit and intent of NRS 241. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Theeson?
Betty Theeson, for the record. I would like to echo all of Scott's comments about the public comment, but I also would like to back up Commissioner Clark on bringing public comment back to the beginning of every meeting. Also add the prana transmission line back to the agenda that he has requested. Also add the retro pay for Washoe County employees back to the agenda. I was scanning the Washoe County website. Public comment is shown on there to be at the beginning of every meeting. That has not been changed. So we need our public comment back to the beginning of the meeting. I do know Mr. Archileta, and he did wait a long time to make a public comment about his septic system. This is uncalled for. We need it back. So add that, all those things back to the agenda immediately. Thank you.
Valerie Fianaca?
I expected there to be a herd here. I'm sorry I'm late. Valerie Fianaca, for the record. Thank you, Commissioner Clark, for holding your senior town hall. That was awesome. I don't live in your district, but I got a lot of information out of it. I'm hoping that my commissioner will do the same in our district. I know there's a lot of old people in Sparks, because I know a lot of them. Our government, our federal government, via Mueller and now Durham, has now spent almost $50 million going after President Trump. However, our county has lost 41 million, just lost it, in COVID funds. I have a commitment from two of our commissioners that they will try and figure this out. I would like that commitment from all five of you. Since you're all five not here, I suppose you can't give it to me. You're off the hook for tomorrow with the Ethics Commission, since they're going to be hearing and speaking to Joe Rodriguez, one of our school board candidates. He's on number four now, and they've found cause with several of his complaints. Just, I'm just going to have to be patient. Assembly bill being heard today is allowing the vote count to be started on the first day of early voting. This is very disturbing to me. It enshrines cheating. It shows everybody what the vote count is, how much we need to make up for. And I'm talking about Republicans and Democrats. I don't, I think Republicans cheat just as much as Democrats do. I'm bipartisan in that regard. Other bills out there are enshrining machines with paper only being touched once. That allows for no recount, none whatsoever, ever. And it's being written into the law in our state. And now we have the election group, thanks to my commissioner. I have zero trust in our elections, period. None. You have a highly qualified applicant for our Assistant Registrar Voters. I know that for a fact. She's been denied now twice. She's been given no reason why her application has been turned down. She's worked for this county for more than 20 years. She knows everything there is to know about our Elections Department, and that I presume is the reason she's being turned down. I think she sent her packet to all of you. I think you should all take a look at it and make, judge for yourselves. Ask some questions about being, why she's being turned down.
There's nobody else signed in. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to close item number 12, public comment. And Mr. Manager, please open up item number 13.
Item 13 is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
All right. Does anyone have any reports, updates, or requests for information? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Chair Garcia. Yes, as I brought up earlier, I've got several points that I would like to see on the agenda. I'd like the commissioners to have the opportunity to vote on it. I'd like to find out where everybody on this dais stands on public comment at the start of the meeting. I think we need to have a discussion. I think we need to have a vote, and I think we need, the public needs to know that it isn't just a unilateral decision. And if other commissioners think it's a great idea, I'd like to see them go on the record and support their position. Next, I, since I voted in the affirmative on the Piranha Power Line, I'd like to see that back on the agenda as soon as possible. As far as the auditing, the donations, we've talked about that, but I think we should look, look at, look at folks that we might donate money to and ask what their needs are and find out a little bit more and find out about outcomes when we finally do decide to, to, you know, and it isn't donating our money, it's funneling and diverting taxpayers' funds to nonprofits that we think are, might be doing a good job. And if we think they're doing a good job, let's find out about it and let's share it with the, with the taxpayers and let them know how their taxpayer, how their tax dollars are being spent. Also, Chair Hill, before she left, brought up she would like to see the Tyrolean Village come back for another review. And, and I support that. And I'd like to ask that we invite somebody from the assessors' office to come along and explain that community. I spent several hours with them yesterday and today in between meetings and this morning about Tyrolean Village. It's a very unique project. A lot of the common area has, has property on it that's owned by someone else. So, so there's a common area influence there. And the common area, if I looked at the attorneys from supporting the Tyrolean Village Homeowners Association, there's one car allowed per, per garage. I don't care if the garage will hold 40 cars. It's one car per garage. Some of these garages are built on common area. They're taxed, the improvement in Cali, Nevada, we have a bifurcated tax code. Land is one value at market value, and improvements is cost new, less depreciation. So we've got improvements owned by somebody else and the land owned by, by the association. So that's a big deal on parking. So we need to look at that. This is on the short-term rentals. I thought we did a good job for the appellant and got, got some reduction there. And I thought we did a good, good job for the person owning the property. They're allowed to rent out their house to, up to eight people. They want, they want more than eight people? I don't know. It sounds, seems like a barracks to me if you get more than eight people in your house, to say. But apparently, they're not happy. And so let's bring them back in and talk about that. Ms. Herman, Commissioner Herman is, Vice Chair Herman is not available here today. She asked me to ask on the record about her reimbursement. Apparently, she went to Washington DC sometime in January, end of February, first part of February. Still hasn't received her reimbursements. But we have Manager Brown here. I'd like to ask him, what is the usual turnaround time for your reimbursements if you were traveling and get reimbursements back? How, what timeframe are you looking at?
Commissioner, usually within a couple of weeks, but I happen to know there were some outstanding issues with that trip, and they were trying to clean, clean those up with the commissioner. So I'll ask commission support.
Sure. Follow-up. And just to follow up with that, and again, this is, she's told me, I don't have evidence of this, but she said, over the years, she thinks that she hasn't been paid for about half of her travel expenses. So that's maybe something that the, the comptroller could look into or the accounting department and find out. And if, if Commissioner Herman is wrong, let's, let's set the record straight, because she's under the impression she hasn't been reimbursed in the past. So I don't know if it's true or not. It's been brought up. Let's look into it and have answers. Also, I know we bought a couple of ice cream makers for the seniors. I don't know if those have been in use at all. Have we had those available for senior events? I thought we saw, saw evidence that we bought two of those. Can you, do you know of that, Manager Brown, of those?
We bought one.
Bought one? They've been used yet?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Where, where did we use those? And, and what was the outcome?
It's in the senior center. I thought I saw email exchange between you and the director at the senior center.
I thought those were going to be moved around, too. Is that, was that so with the machines?
Commissioner, I don't have knowledge of that, but I can ask.
Okay. Just a question. Just a follow-up question on my part. And then lastly, we've got a seniors booklet that we printed up, and there's a number of misprints or, or, I don't know what, what exactly has taken place. It looked like they've been redacted. There's so many corrections in here. When we make mistakes on these, does, does anybody ever take it, an opportunity to throw, we've got 3,100 people working here. Can anybody proofread the things that we're printing up? Or if when we do find inconsistencies or misprints, can we, can we reprint these? I mean, it's kind of an insult to send these out with, you know, Sharpie marks on them and labels in them. So again, it just, how do we get to do things better? That's my question is, does anybody proofread anything that we're sending out? It seems like there's a lot of typos, and people bring it to my attention, and I don't want to be embarrassed by it. There's got to be a better way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and close item number 13. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. We are adjourned.